I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderman Vukovich.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard, Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
First item on our agenda is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. I know some of you have reached out to me to speak to agenda items and I have your names for those. So if anybody wants to speak to a non-agenda item, you're welcome to come up here to the front. I see somebody walking up right now. If you would please state your name and address, please.
Mayor, my name is Amanda Seligman. I live at 7120 North Braburn, where I've lived since 2003. Thank you. I also would like to include my professional credentials in my introduction tonight. I have a PhD in American history from Northwestern University and I teach US urban history and urban studies at UWM. I don't usually bring my professional credentials to city affairs, but I wanted to mention that, bring them to your attention tonight because of what I'd like to just talk about. I'm going to make two major points for you. One is that building codes are public health measures and I want to talk a little bit about the history of that. And then I also would like to talk about the troubling consequences of privatizing inspection processes. So just to tell a quick story from last week, we had had building renovation in our home and we were closing out the inspection process and an inspector with the company that the city contracts with to do inspections came to our home. And when I asked him to please put on a mask so he could do the, conduct the inspection, he said to me, I don't do masks, which was kind of shocking to me. So I said, you can't come in our house in that case. We had a little bit of exchange about that and he decided that it would be fine for me to just take pictures of the places in our house that had been remodeled and he would look at those instead. This did not seem, sit quite right with me either as an inspection process or as an interaction. So I reached out to my alderman, Alderman Bailey, to the mayor, who also involved Mr. Fellows. And I'd like to thank you all for your quick response and your understanding that it's not really a good idea to run inspections in this particular way. I was shocked by this interaction on two levels. One, just by somebody refusing what seemed to me to be a basic courtesy of masking up to come into my home. He had no idea of the health of people that I'm trying to protect. But it also bothered me because of my professional expertise, which includes the history of building codes. I'm one of the few people in the United States who's written about this history in my scholarship. And what bothered me was that he did not seem to understand that there was an enormous disjuncture between his unwillingness to wear a mask and what his job was. He, I think he saw, as I thought about it, I think he saw the building code, the housing code, simply as a set of demands by the city to regulate and perhaps keep up with property values. But what I know because of my expertise in the history of building codes is why we have them in the first place. And I want to just tell you again that they are public health measures. The reason we have building codes is fire. Throughout world history, there have been fires. You've heard of them, London, San Francisco, Chicago, others, in part because cities were built of wood. And what happened was in the 19th century, as building techniques began to change and as cities were getting much larger and fires were getting even more damaging, there were debates about the future of building, rebuilding on sites that had been destroyed by fire. And the very debate that they had was whether you could effectively destroy somebody's value of their property by insisting that if your house was burned down, your wooden house was burned down and you were going to rebuild, that you had to rebuild with brick, even if you couldn't afford to rebuild with brick, because it would be unsafe for you to live, for anyone to live in a wooden house when fires were so destructive. Now, there's a longer history to building codes that I will not try to bore you all with, because I'm pretty much the only person who's interested in them. But one of the things that I realized in the course of my research was that it's very tricky to get building codes right. You have to balance enforcement and non-enforcement so that you are not damaging the lives of people as well as protecting their lives. If you over-enforce, if you send inspectors out in shockwaves, you can basically move entire groups of people out of neighborhoods because they can't afford to live there. And on the other hand, if you don't enforce them at all, you can end up with hundreds of people dying in house fires, which has happened, not here in Glendale, but other places in the United States. Building codes can also be used for racist reasons, reasons that I learned apply in Glendale as well as other places. Some of you are familiar with the no longer effective ordinance in which, which demanded that there be a full inspection of a home at this point of sale. I was on a task force to investigate the problems with how that was being implemented in Glendale. And one of the reasons it was implemented was it had originally been intended just to take place on Glendale's southern border in order to quote unquote, keep Milwaukee from moving into Glendale, which was clearly a racist dog whistle. Still, despite the fact that building codes are subject to this kind of abuse, I do believe in them and I believe that a well-administered building code saves lives. And frankly, it's much more onerous to comply with a building code to get people who know what they're doing, to build properly, to build with expensive materials, than it is to wear a mask in somebody's house for five minutes. And that brings me to my second point. We live here in a democracy and I thank you all for your service on the city council. I can come and speak to you about building codes and I can trust that you all can take this information forward in the work that you do on behalf of our city, that the city administrator and the director, director of community development can talk to the staff and remind them of the things that I've said about the reasons public health underpins building codes and a lot of other things that we do as a city. I do not have the means to demand this kind of audience with a private company, such has been contracted with, to do some portion of Glendale's inspections. And to me, that points up the peril, perils of privatizing government functions. Thank you. That's what I wanted to say tonight. I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public comment portion for, to non-agenda items? I don't see anyone in the chamber. If there's anyone who is attending the meeting via the Zoom and wants to speak to a non-agenda item, you may unmute and state your name and address. All right. As the end of our public comment, we will move on then to item three, which is the consent agenda, the adoption of the minutes of our last meeting and the approval of accounts payable. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Galhard.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmelzling. Any discussion? Okay, without, if there's no objection to the consent agenda, we will move on.
I would like to abstain. A present at the meet.
Okay. So the consent agenda is considered adopted with one abstention? All right. Thank you. Next, we start into our new business. The first item is a proclamation recognizing Dennis Fisher, Steve Sheldrop and Officer Garrett Yaw for heroically performing life-saving measures. And I will turn it over to, is this the chief or the city administrator?
Turn this over to Charlie Imick, our director of public works, to give a little rundown of the situation that resulted in the three gentlemen being here tonight, if you don't mind, Charlie. Given a quick description like you did to me on the phone at three o'clock in the morning.
I will try to recount as much as I can. I was not on duty that night doing snow and ice operations, however, Steve and Dennis were, and Officer Yar was on regular duty, I believe, as, with the Glendale PD. Quickly, I guess, for, for, for lack of time here. Snow and ice operations concluded and typically after the conclusion, it isn't, if it's in the middle of the night, which this was, sidewalks would be probably addressed the next day. But knowing it was a holiday, that sort of thing, and it was obviously very cold. I think it was what, minus 10 or, you know, minus 30 below something that night. Dennis volunteered to go and do the sidewalks with our tool kit and started on Silver Spring, which again, one of those things where it's like, you know, this, it really wouldn't normally be done, you know? So he went out and was passing one of the bus stops at Hyzer, right across from Pick and Save on Silver Spring. And the lights, the noise, saw a woman sitting in front of the, the bus stop and kind of woke her up. I mean, I think she was in some sort of, you know, kind of not, not healthy situation, so to speak. And called Steve. Steve called dispatch and got somebody out there to assist her and she was in not good condition. It turns out, I think she was the silver alert from earlier that morning. So this is what, one o'clock, I think in the, in the morning. So she had been out all day in adverse conditions. So at that point, Dennis and Steve, Steve had helped Officer Yar, got the woman into the squad and got her to where she needed to go. But again, it's one of those things where if each and one of those three persons had not done what they had done, it is assumed that this woman probably would not have made it. So it's with that, that the proclamation was put forward because it, it was quite an accomplishment and one of those things that obviously doesn't come along every day in your line of duty, what we're doing. But they did act in a way that I believe saved her life.
Thank you, Charlie. The proclamation is before us, actually. It's pretty much everything he said is in all the warehouse clauses, but I would like to read the resolved. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the city council recognizes Dennis, Steve and Garrett for going above the line of duty and performing life safety actions in dangerous weather conditions to provide assistance to a person in need. And then if approved by the council, it's already signed by me, but passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Glendale this ninth day of January 2023. So I guess I'd like a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Shaw, seconded by Alderman Doherty. And then is there any discussion or questions anybody has from members of the council? Yeah, Alderman Schmelzling?
I just want to say, this is a great example of where if one person were to have just looked the other way, things would have ended a lot differently. So thank you. It's great to have the staff that always is looking out for Glendale and everybody else.
All right. All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I do have framed proclamation. So if we could have Dennis, Steve and Officer Yar come up? Charlie and Carl, do you want to be a part of this? Nice to have great and positive as part of our meeting tonight. Then we just get into some minutia or the reason that many of you are in the room to talk about some of our ordinance changes. So nice to, to be able to, to recognize the great work of our city staff and, and certainly the, the times when they have the opportunity to go above and beyond the call of duty. So. All right. Next item is actually review. This is an update from the Wisconsin DOT on the I-43 North South project. So I know we have some folks here from the DOT. It's a tricky microphone. You have to talk basically right directly into it.
Okay.
With the little red light that's on there stops shining, then it means the folks on the Zoom can't hear you and you're not going to be on the microphone or actually on the speakers. Yep.
And it's a fun angle I have to deal with, see the presentation. So luckily I brought a hard copy version to, to have you all follow along. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ken Kipchinsky. I'm a construction project manager for the Wisconsin DOT, working here on the I-43 corridor. Today, we're going to give you a little kind of a high level update on what we're doing on the freeway here. We're going to have a lot of orange barrels out here all the way from Grafton down to nearly downtown. So we got representatives here with us to kind of walk you through and give you a good update of what's going on in, in the corridor. So we actually have two programs that are working in the corridor. One is, I know it had a high level of involvement with Glendale in regards to the I-43 modernization and addition of lanes from I, from essentially Silver Spring all the way up to Grafton. I'm actually a project manager for a couple of those projects. And then we have a supervisor here covering project south of Silver Spring with the URT project and other affiliated backbone projects down the Brown Street. So. So what I'm going to cover here first is the I-43 corridor, which actually began in late 2021. We had, we have a couple of projects that are going on here. It all started with a work zone prep project where we went out there and did a lot of annoying night and day work, putting in some temporary widening and rebuilding some shoulders for our bigger projects to take suit. So where we're at right now is we completed that work zone project, work zone prep project, and now we're working on a segment that's called the North End segment. You can see it's color coded up there on the graphic. That gray section is actually the north end limits. It goes from Highway 60 all the way down to just a little bit south of Highland, Highland Road. South of there is another segment, the McQuinn Road segment, which is not under construction. It's kind of a nice little buffer zone, but will be under construction most likely at the, towards the end of this year. Below that is the county line and Port Washington Road segment, which I am actually the project manager for, goes from Donjust Bay all the way to Brown Deer Road. And then lastly, we'll talk to, about the, the next big project kind of happening right at the front door of Glendale, that'd be the South End project, which goes from Brown Deer all the way to the UP Railroad Overpass. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we, we've made a lot of improvement in the corridor here already in our first year of major construction on the North End segment with, would be the graphics on the, on the left side. That project has undertaken a lot overhead bridge work. They fully demolished and reconstructed the Falls Road Bridge and reopened it late this fall. They also went ahead and for future staging on that job, went ahead and, and did some temporary widening of the I-43 bridges over Lakefield Road. Again, not notable, it's kind of throwaway cost, but again, necessary to stage traffic and keep it a level of service in the corridor. And then lastly, the most noticeable thing was putting in a new freeway interchange at the Highland Road. At Highland Road, so giving that front door access to Concordia University. And, and that was a great success. Built a couple of bridges there, a bunch of walls and that, that whole interchange is now in its full use with some remaining work to do, but it's, it's working out pretty great. Moving further south, the county line project that was active and began last year, we, we came out with a bang and then brought down the Donjust Bay Road Bridge and also the Port Washington Road Bridge. Both of those bridges have been rebuilt and put traffic on there. Donjust Bay was done in September and then we just recently, just before the holiday, got Port Washington Road rebuilt. So most notably, you know, the, that interchange there at come between county line and Port Washington Road is going to look a bit different than it did previously. There was only two service ramps that were there. When we're all said and done there and, and complete the county line road bridge, we'll have full four ramps at that interchange and be a little bit better service to the community there of accessing McQuinn Road and the Port Washington Road area. Next slide, please. So what do we have going on this year? So as I described, that North End project, we got done with the Highland Road interchange. Next interchange to tackle is, is now the County Highway C interchange. So our contractors are still trying to set a date for that, but that whole interchange, as far as the ramps will be closing at some point this winter, as early as possibly later this month. So it's a good thing we got that Highland Road interchange opened and fully serviceable. It allows us to work on the County Highway C interchange. We do have a vast amount, since we work concentrate on the Highland Road and Falls Road and then some of that temporary at Lakefield Road. We do have a lot more concrete pavement to do on this project this year. Only got a, a left shoulder and permanent lane one. You're going to see a lot more concrete pavement go down rapidly on this project. The vast majority of it will be done by the end of this year. Also, between having the closures at County Highway C, we're going to have some closures again at Highway 60 and on Highland Road to kind of make those connections to the mainline freeway. Those will not be concurrent while we have County Highway C closed. And then lastly, during the year last year, when we did some temporary widening at Lakefield Road for the interstate bridge, we had to close Lake, Lakefield Road underneath. We'll have to do that again when we construct the permanent structures as we go through for, as a safety precaution. So again, a lot, a vast amount of that, that project is going to get rebuilt this year and, and it'll be, it'll be a great. I'm sure everybody's going to enjoy the ride a little bit there, especially in the southbound direction.
You're saying in the meantime, it's going to be really hard to get to Costco?
It's, it's going to be the same two lanes that has been there.
Did you say Highway 60 is closing though, right?
Highway 60 will close for a certain period of time, just the ramps.
Right.
Just the ramps. So you'll be able to access either through Highway C or go up to 32. So. So, and, and I think those closures are relatively short term, if I remember right, they're on the border of a month or something like that. So. So we will have more PI outreach in regards when that happens. So you'll know when you can go to Costco or stock up before you go.
Yeah. Or go to the Menominee Falls instead.
Um, and then again, I apologize. I'm trying to make this as brief as possible. There's a lot of information to share and we want to make sure it's out there just for overall knowing in the corridor. So now looking at the county line road and Inter, Port Washington Road interchange segment, you can go to the next slide. Tonight into tomorrow, we're closing the county line bridge over I-43. We got Port Washington Bridge done and open and County Line was serving as the detour during that time. And now we're going to close it since Port Washington Road is open and hopefully next week, start a string of full freeway closures to demolish and rebuild that, that bridge. So that's one of our main points this year. Last year on the project, we did construct a significant amount of concrete pavement, but we had to leave that gap kind of like underneath County Line Road. So we're going to be concentrating on filling in a few more gaps, concrete pavement on the freeway and underneath all the full pavement to reconstruct underneath County Line Road. And we do have quite a bit of finish up work to do on Port Washington, Port Washington Road itself. And that kind of coincides with the staging, how we have to prosecute the, the construction at the County Line Bridge. So the good news is by the middle of this year, in, in, in the summertime, we're going to be having that project completely finished, all the ramps open and we'll have fresh new white pavement in that corridor.
Would that be before the McQuinn Road? Could you, I'd said at a previous slide that McQuinn Road was going to close periodically too.
It's going to be right around the same, just, just before.
So when you close one access point, the ones on either end, the, the exit before or afterwards?
Yeah, it, it, it should, unless we see some, something unforeseen, it, it should be done in, in the middle of summer. McQuinn Road will get let for construction in July and most likely start near Labor Day-ish, I would guess. So. So I think I covered everything with the North End and Port Washington Road segments. And so I'll turn it over to Tony here to talk about the, the South End project.
So I'm Tony Keegan. I work for H and TV and I help manage traffic along the entire corridor, all the way from 60 all the way down to the Marquette. So if you're not sure which one of these guys to contact, you can always contact me. You can go to the next slide. So South End, I think most of the people in this room are going to be the most concerned about what's happening on the South End. It's still in its infancy. We still just, we just have a contractor on board. They're just starting to put together their schedule. There's a lot of work that they're trying to coordinate. So what I'm going to give you is a lot of very general information. We do have, as I'll explain a little bit farther on down, we do have a very robust public information outreach program. So you're definitely going to have plenty of time to plan ahead. But in general, the project is going to start probably in sometime this spring, once the frost comes out of the ground and on the freeway, what you're going to see is a widening on the southbound side on the right shoulder. So we're going to have a lot of overnight lane closures in order to do that work right off the bat. We're also going to, at some point, once we are able to shift traffic onto that new widening, halfway about through the year, we'll probably have northbound crossed over. So we'll definitely have a crossover through this work zone. It'll be from right around that railroad bridge all the way to north of Brown Deer. So that's in general, what's going to be happening on the freeway this year. Not a terrible lot of work, because a lot of the impacts, a lot of you are going to really be interested in are the rest of the impacts that I'm going to talk about. So let's just start with the next bullet, Gene Nicolay Road. That's going to be a pretty big impact. The railroad itself, it's really narrow, that roadway that, so the, the, we're going to have to close the, that roadway. This year, where the closure is going to be is going to be between Bender and Brentwood. Obviously, we're going to still allow access to driveways and things like that. We do a lot of outreach to emergency response. We talk with these, the property owners. But we are going to have to do the, a full closure in that area. So there will be a detour to get around for anybody trying to get to the high school. Along with that, Fairfield will need to close, which is that Fairfield just, just north of the railroad again, because we need the space in order to get that work done. Moving down to Port Washington Road, Port Washington Road itself should not close. I believe there's a weekend closure somewhere towards the end of summer in order to do some alignment around the railroad. But in general, Port Washington Road will stay open to traffic. It'll be shifting around a lot though. So this whole entire roadway is going to look completely different by the time it's done. So there's going to be a lot of movement of that road and then all of those side roads will also have some impacts. Likely some long-term closures, but again, we'll reach out when those become imminent. So everybody can plan around for that. Moving down to the interchanges, both Brown Deer and Good Hope Road will be under construction, but both Brown Deer and Good Hope Road will remain open to traffic, except for some occasional overnight lane closures or possibly full closures. And then the ramps though, the ramps will have some long-term closures. We've done our best during design to organize these ramp closures so that either Brown Deer or Good Hope will be open all the time. So if one side, one of those ramps, like a Good Hope is closed, you'll know that the ones at Brown Deer will be open. So I guess in general, that's kind of the, the general discussion about what's going to be happening this year. Again, very summarized. So there will have a lot more outreach coming up. Go ahead to the next slide. One other thing I wanted to mention is that part of this project is also a reconstruction of the Green Bay Road and Range Line Road intersection, because that's a major route for if there's an incident on the freeway, we need to send traffic somewhere. We use that Green Bay Road as that option. So we're adding left turn bays and a signal in that area. That work should be done right away this spring. And I believe it's supposed to be done by around the end of May-ish. Okay, moving on to the next slide. So this is just a real quick rendering of what the Brown Deer interchange is going to look like when it's done. It's called a diverging diamond. It's not going to look like this till the end of 2024, but it's always nice to see when you're going to have all these impacts, what, what it's going to be like at the end. So we can talk about that more when we get a little bit closer. We'll probably come back and visit you again. But in general, what a diverging diamond does is it reduces the number of conflict points. And you'll really notice the big thing that's missing here are those big loop ramps. So we're not going to have those anymore, but we are still going to have some pretty good flow of traffic through that area. Yes, go ahead.
Just wanted to add one more thing with Brown Deer. So we're, we're making a pretty drastic geometric change there. So what, just during construction, this is going to be a very challenging area for us to handle in regards to, you know, we have loop ramps. It's kind of a cloverleaf interchange right now. A lot of those, those loop ramps get closed on the onset and we actually signalize up on top of Brown Deer Road, which will be something different than they're kind of used to right now. So I just wanted to kind of draw that attention. It's going to be, it's going to be a little bit slow going there. I mean, we're always going to be tweaking our signals, but I mean, it's, that's a drastic change for the community, we understand, but it's, it's temporary. It will eventually be signaled as being a divergent diamond where traffic actually crosses on the opposite side of traffic. If you ever traveled to another state or to Janesville, you have seen one of these and they operate really great in the end. So I just want to kind of make note of that, that when we do get to that and we'll be starting that relatively soon, this, this spring, just something to be aware of.
I'm just curious, around Sheboygan, where you've redone the, the freeway interchanges, you basically did away with all the stoplights and put in roundabouts? And I'm curious as to why the move to add stoplights where they didn't exist before? As opposed to looking at those other, because They just stop traffic and then you sit there for two or three or four minutes. I'm just curious as to why you didn't explore some of the options you've used in other parts of the state.
But the traffic expert comment on that, geez, a very smart traffic person, but I would, I would, I would imagine this has to do with of. Traffic volume and safety in general for the area. Um, do you?
Right. I, I think the only other, I mean, we can look that up for you, but we weren't obviously in a lot of the design either. So I know that there were a lot of alternatives that were discussed and I can find that information for you to see why they ended up with this diverging diamond. But my guess would be that um the, just the amount of volume of traffic that's coming through, this would be the most efficient. Um.
All right.
Go ahead. Did you have another question?
Yeah, so uh you mentioned that um. Uh, Bretton Wood, uh Bender to Bretton Wood is going to be closed and then Fairfield is going to be closed. So essentially then. There's not going to be any access to say Nicolay High School from the south. Would that be, and how long is that going to be?
A good part of the year. It's gonna, you're gonna have to, the, the officially signed detour will be to use um Green Bay Road and Green Tree to come back from the north.
For Hills is gonna love that.
They're aware, they're aware. Um, uh, but obviously a lot of the locals that live in the area are going to know how to get around to the, you know, the, the. More local roadways. But yeah, that's, it's Green Tree is going to be the route to get there.
And when does it start?
Uh, we don't have an identified date yet. So.
Okay. A lot of that's kind of contingent on the utilities finishing up their work and allowing our contractors to go and work in that work zone. So that's, I mean, by, we're being. Somewhat vague on that, but there's going to be plenty of blanketed P I notice for how this is going to go and how long it's going to go. Or when it's going to start and how long it's going to go. And we understand the inconvenience and, and, and change it's going to be for people, but when it's all said and done, it's going to be great.
Uh, I. Real quick, isn't Gene Nicolay a two-year closure as well? There'll be a phase B to that as you go to the north. So for two years, the, the road will probably remain closed.
It will reopen. I believe it's planned to reopen over the winter because it's closing in different sections. So um, it's closing from Bender to Brentwood to start. And then next year it'll be farther to the north and they work it around the driveway of the high school so that there's always access to the driveway.
We, we dealt with the Green Tree Bridge being rebuilt a few years ago when all the traffic was at Bender. So I mean, the, the high school will work out a, a traffic pattern, but.
Right. And they have, we've met with them before too. Um, I just wanted to point out real quick on this slide, um, one thing that wasn't discussed yet, um, this is the Good Hope interchange. Um, you can see that the Port Washington Road intersection is in there as well. Um, there is going to be a lot of work at the entire interchange, including in Port Washington Road intersection. So um, just heads up, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of shifting around the east leg of that intersection. Um, away from the freeway that will also close, I believe it's like a hundred days. Uh, so a lot of planning is going to go into that, but um completely, it's going to look completely different when it's done. All right. And I think you can go to the next slide and that would be Jason.
I just wanted to add, I have the pleasure working on this uh, on this uh project as well. So I already met Charlie and talked through some things and. You know, the other thing we have going on right away and you know, is probably a sensitive subject amongst residents is clearing and grubbing and clearing trees and. Doing, working on, on, in areas now that are adjacent to people's homes. So we sent out several P I notices, one that we're, we have survey people coming out the mark out stuff. So they see what's being marked out and then gives them the opportunity to ask questions and then the actual clearing will, will, will uh, will ensue. So again, all of our project information, our P I people, we have a great robust team of traffic and P I professionals helping us out on the project. So again, we'll, at the end of this presentation, we'll, we'll show how to get in contact with us.
Okay, thank you. Ken and Tony, so my name is Jason Lynch and I'm the D O T Southeast Freeway Backbone Construction Supervisor. And when I say backbone, a lot of you are probably wondering what that means. And so the backbone uh program handles projects solely on the interstate. Aside from some of the programs like Ken spoke to the I forty-three corridor north of Milwaukee County. So the backbone, my team handles projects all over the, the region, so seven counties. Uh, some of which um have been in the Milwaukee area in the last few years with the Kilborn tunnels, the mark, the resurfacing, the market interchange. And then obviously I'm here to speak about the U R T project, which is uh just north of downtown. Um, so let me do my best to see, uh, pick a screen here. And um, so I have good news and bad news. The good news is it's the third and final year of the U R T. The bad news is I will continue the parade of orange drums down I forty-three um going towards downtown. So. I, I apologize, but um.
Got to make sure the state flower is, is on, on every roadway during the winter, during the summer months, right?
I empathize with everyone that drives on the freeway. I tell friends and family that I don't enjoy construction any more than anyone else. Um. But so for the U R T, um, with some of the things that uh, the good news is a lot of what you see, the traffic impacts that you've seen the last two years are going to continue. Right now, we're in a winter shutdown mode. So what that means is um, we shifted traffic a few weeks ago back in December. Um, so what you saw over the last couple of years is the bridges over Glendale, Hampton and the Milwaukee River were built in pieces. So um, northbound uh and southbound, the outsides are the new pavement and bridges that you're going to be driving on when the project is completed. Um, so we push traffic to the outside northbound. The one big change that we did for this winter shutdown was open northbound to three lanes. Um, we kept most of the ramps closed that we had over the last two years. The good news is the public is acclimated. And so in year three, um, you're really going to see the same closure. So the ramp from Freebuns near Mesmer High School is going to remain closed. Just for safety, traffic operations. And then obviously just north of that, you're going to see more construction continuing. Um, really what you see today is that you're going to, we're going to be rebuilding the inner third of the freeway, including those bridges and roadway. Um, in addition to the, some of the work we're going to be doing is sound walls along um the outside, southbound and northbound. Um, northbound, you're going to see a sound wall being built near Mesmer High School, just north of Capital Drive. And southbound near the Spreakerville neighborhood, um, you can already see some of that sound wall being constructed. Sure.
I'm, I'm wondering, uh, originally a couple of years ago, we had, I know you're doing a, the noise wall replacement on the west side of the highway. But um, it was a request before to have it on the east side of the highway. And no one ever got back to me and I actually did call a couple of people that, the numbers that I had, I don't know if it was you. But why is it that, the, then, oh, I got the answer that um. It's not needed on the east side, but if you go further down. Um, Port Washington Road, it is on the east side. So I'm just wondering what's the difference between having a noise wall replacement on the northern side of Glendale. When around Hampton Avenue where there's um houses and apartments and it's not even, it's probably three blocks. Or, or something to that effect, why it wasn't on the east side of the wall?
Sure. And noise walls, having worked on environmental studies, designs and construction, then noise walls are a very sensitive issue. And there's a long process that um is dictated by state law that one, you have to do a study and see how many receptors there are. And then you have to determine eligibility first. That's the first step. And then the, the surrounding neighborhoods are very involved as far as they have to want to have a noise wall. Um, so as far as the U R T project, that would have been determined during the design phase. So I can't get into all the details as to what, how it was determined. Um, did, so you don't recall who you reached out to? Because there are, there's a, there's a design project manager and then a design team that worked on the U R T design.
Right, I can. They're not here. I mean, I can definitely, I would like to reach out because. I think when some of this planning was, I was the alderman and I actually went to a, a couple of the, the um. Uh, in, informational sessions and there was definitely. People and they, and the, the way I remember it, it was like, yes, we do believe that this is um, because it's something about the loudness of the traffic. And then how it bounces off. See, I remember this part and how it bounces off, off something to, to hear what the decimal is or whatever it's called. And. According to what we thought, the north side or the east side of that wall was going to be included. As long with the Glendale Avenue to protect the Glendale Avenue area residents. And then all of a sudden, like two, three weeks ago, I see a rendering. I just thought it was done. And then I see a rendering. Where there's nothing on this side, but when you go northern to the north side of Glendale, all of a sudden there's a pretty, you know, noise wall there. And I'm wondering why.
And I'll, and I'll just piggyback. I've gotten calls from several people in Whitefish Bay. And that's six blocks east of the freeway. They can hear all the freeway noise now that you brought the freeway down to grade. And so, I mean, it isn't just Glendale. It's, I mean. If you were to approach Whitefish Bay and ask them, you're going to hear from their residents too. The noise has gone up significantly. And we have folks that live right, you know, along Port Washington Road in Glendale that are fifty feet from the freeway now and there's no noise wall.
Sure. And that, that's, oh, sorry, what?
Yes. I personally, I live one block east of Port. And I have a little elevated house, but I really don't hear anything. I am two blocks away. So I'm not concerned about where I am, which is south of Silver Spring up until probably Henry Clay. Because most of those are, are businesses. And then we're a little bit further back that we don't hear as much when you live in townhouses and stuff. What I'm concerned is those people that live right on Port Washington Road and it's not a big area. But it's from like a little bit um, south of Henry Clay to Hampton. And even though it's a small amount, they actually count too. And those people deserve to at least be heard. And I understand this might have been part of the process. But from what I understand, which is. A while ago, I was at some of those meetings and I, I, and I'll get the notes and I talk to people. So I, I know you can't hash it out right now, but. I would like to have some kind of conversation because that was the understanding we had. And, and I thought this whole time they were going to have it until I saw a rendering like two, three weeks ago. And I'm like. Uh, where's the other side of this? You know, so um. We can keep going, but that is, and please hurry up with that Hampton forty-three ramp. I'm just like.
Believe me, we try to build these as quickly as possible in a safe manner. But no, regarding the sound walls, I mean, in all the projects that, I mean, I personally have been a part of along the freeway. Um, you know, with the, the ninety-four east-west day that's going on right now. And then some of the various other projects like the Zoo Interchange and others. Then obviously there's a lot of uh sound walls that uh align the freeway and all over the region and all over the state. And so there's a lot of factors that play into that. Um, I think Tony had mentioned that the last slide in our presentation has our contact information. So by all means, you know, my contact information's on there. So if you have any questions, you know, feel free to send me an email. I, or uh, and send me your contact information because by all means, I can get you in touch with the, the individuals that worked on the, the study. And the design of the project, because I personally, when it gets to me, that's when the shovels hit the dirt and we start constructing the plan.
Warning you, do you really want me to?
I used to work on the, I used to work on the east-west and the stadium interchange. So I, I welcome a lot of feedback from everyone. So.
And you can also work through Charlie Imig. Um, he has all their contact information. He's worked closely with all three of these people throughout this whole project. So.
I, I was going to mention that, uh, yeah, I was going to mention that we've worked closely with Charlie. We, we give monthly, if not quarterly updates on the project. In fact, I, I believe we're doing one tomorrow.
Through the city with Charlie than just us directly. So there's some, you know, uh. Record, you know, the somebody in the city, a representative of the city is there. So I will give my questions to Charlie and, and see what you guys can work out. And then it kind of takes me out, but it's, you know, I still am in the loop.
Sure, I'll coordinate with Charlie and follow up.
So we fully anticipated some questions on the noise walls. Every project that has noise walls usually generates a lot of questions of. Who qualifies, why I qualify, why I don't qualify, all that stuff. Um, at the end of the presentation, we, we have a website that we're putting out there. We actually have a F, like kind of a F A Q to educate everybody on the process that involves noise wall analysis and what is um. What is allowed or not allowed by state law with that. So we, we'll, we'll have that out there and just, everybody can take a look at that and then generate other questions from that as well. So.
So just to continue, uh, some of the other bullets up the retaining walls, um, really like I said, the, the construction was, construction is going to be very similar to what you saw the last two years. There's going to be retaining walls, sound wall construction, the bridges over the, the local roads. And um, the next slide, we're going to be getting into, into traffic impacts. And again, those traffic impacts um are going to be very similar. One thing that um, the culmination of the project that when we get to the end, obviously the main line is going to be rebuilt. The big thing that the public has seen and all of you, I'm sure, have seen that we dropped the, the freeway about twenty to twenty-five feet. And um, I mean, the whole scope of the project, which we've indicated at the very beginning, but for anyone here that doesn't know is that. A big factor is obviously safety. We realigned I forty-three. It's much, it's going to be much smoother than it was. But then also we removed the U R T bridge, that large bridge, which we've all driven over thousands of times, but we didn't know what the U R T bridge was called. Um, and so that's really it's a safe cost to the taxpayers. Instead of maintaining a large uh lengthy bridge where you're going to be driving on roadway. So basically dirt. Um, so that's going to be done by the end of twenty twenty-three. So next slide, please. So traffic impacts, again, we're going to have overnight closures. We typically do that for work, including demolition, erecting girders, things like that, that obviously we can't do. Um, along or over traffic. Um, one big thing that we're going to be doing uh to build um the southbound entrance ramp from Hampton. Um, that bridge has been closed. There's been uh, been utilized by the contractor. That bridge is going to be reconstructed this year. And so anyone that uses the trails along the river or lives along the river has seen the, the causeway that we built in the river to provide access. That's been reconfigured and we're going to be using that to rebuild that bridge as well. Um, some of the ramps that have been closed, they're going to remain to be closed. Um, and again, one thing that uh, when we do start up again, weather dependence could be late February, early March, is that northbound will be restricted down to. To two lanes again. We opened it up to three for the winter, but then just because of uh safety and the need for a work zone, we're going to be restricting it to two lanes. Any questions on maintenance of traffic? Another big uh factor that again, acclimating tra- uh, the traveling public to what we uh have been closing and opening over the last couple of years at the end of twenty twenty-three. That, that old hook ramp from northbound I forty-three that would loop back around for to Hampton Avenue, that's gone obviously. But at the end of twenty twenty-three, you're going to have the new ramp from northbound to Port Washington Road. It's not going to go directly to Hampton. And there's going to be a new signalized intersection there. Um, so that's one of the benefits of the project. Questions on traffic? No? Okay. Next slide, please. So another project that is going to be beginning just south of the U R T project, it's a two-year project. It's going to be let in a couple of months. And that's basically the south limit of the U R T project all the way down to Brown Street on I forty-three. Um, so the scope of that project is, um, I'm sure you can see that uh the roadway has taken a beating. The last time the, the, the D O T has done a major project in that area. I'd, I'd like to say that uh, I'm young, but I worked on it twenty years ago. And so we're going to be working on the same stretch. Um, in the next couple of years, we're going to be doing a lot of bridge work. So Locust Avenue. Um, and then Burley are going to be redected and a lot of other work on some of the other bridges. But the main line is obviously going to have the biggest traffic impact. And so we're going to be doing redoing the storm sewer along the, the median, the center of the freeway. And then redoing the shoulders and the main line, obviously with asphalt. Um, so again, that's a two-year project. Questions? And the traffic impacts are going to be very similar to some of the other freeway projects that we do. There can just be overnight closures. There can be lane restrictions, but. Nothing that uh you and the other traveling public that uh travels through Metro Milwaukee isn't used to. No questions? Okay. I believe that is it. Yeah, thank you.
All right. So it's just, I'm just going to finish up quick by um explaining again that we do have a very robust traffic and public information team. Um, and that includes coordinating with the D P Ws on signals and um other types of things like that in order to keep traffic flowing. Um, we coordinate a lot with the emergency responders um to make sure that they know how to access any location as quickly as possible. Um, and then the biggest thing that almost everybody in this room is the most impacted by would be your public involvement. Group um and how their out, um, their outreach affects you. So the biggest thing is they try to reach out to you, give you the information you need as quickly as possible. Before we have the impact so that anybody that's driving through the area can plan ahead. Um, and that's really, I mean, it's the simple, simple part of it. So um, in general, we have, uh, we can meet anybody on site as necessary. Um, so if anybody's looking for something like that, but in general, uh, we do these lit drops um and we send out mass emails with all of that information. Um, and we have one main point of contact. And if you go to the next slide, I just wanted to really quickly point out that there is a project website. And at the top, there are a lot of tabs, um, and most of you can't see what they say right now, but um, the tab that's not there right now is for that south end project. Because it's so new. So that's going to be getting added very soon. Um, and once that's added, that's where almost everybody in this room is going to want to get their information on that particular project. Um, but there are also um other things you can click on in there. You can get pictures. The last tab is a contact us and that has all kinds of contact information as well. Um, and if you go to the last slide that we have here, that's all of the contact information for um Jason, Ken and myself. And then a few others that are also available um to help on the project team. for um, Jason, Ken and myself, and then a few others that are also available um, to help on the project team. Um, and Rachel Andrioli, who is sitting in the far back with the blonde hair, is our public information lead. Um, and she um, works together very mu- very well with me and uh, she's talked to Charlie quite a bit as well. That's all we got.
I just wanna commend you on the the regular reports out to us. I mean, I got a uh, a report, uh, an email from Rachel just a couple of hours ago. You get them almost every day, it seems like, and I know um, our city administrator, when it's been things that impact Glendale, which is most days, it seems like, they get put onto Nextdoor, Facebook and the city's webpage, so we're we're making sure that the word is getting out to our residents as well. But I just wanna commend you on the very high level of information. It seems like on a daily basis, I could look and go, okay, let me look at the email I got, you know, two hours ago, what road is closed? So how do I get to the pick and save? You know, um, so I appreciate your 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 level of of communication with us, so. Anybody on the council have any other comments or questions?
All right.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation. All right, uh, the next item uh, is actually a request, I think, from the city administrator and city attorney about regulations on short-term rentals.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll start out with this and uh, our attorney, I'm sure will fill in some of the blanks, staff was asked to look into um, possible regulations and impacts on short-term rentals in the city of Glendale. Included in the agenda packets and available to the public were two guides. One from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which is a guide to renting out your property. So that's right here printed out, and then from the Wisconsin Bar Association, short-term rentals is a vacation hub, Wisconsin navigates the laws of leisure, so these were two good articles that um, we read and uh, provided a good deal of information. So within the memorandum here, staff is just proposing a review of short-term rentals. Um, from my understanding and talking to our attorney, um, there's very few regulations that the city can enact if we want to. So I'll just run through those real quick, I'll I'll stick away from the the details on here. Um, uh, the first question is, uh, does the city council want to have Attorney Bear draft regulations on short-term rentals? Uh, if we do, the only regulations we can draft are to ban short-term rentals shorter than seven-day period. Um, or determine if the city desires to limit the total number of days in a consecutive three hundred and sixty-five day period. Um, the least you can make that is a hundred and eighty days, is that correct?
That's right.
Um, and then the last and not the least is determine if we'd want to issue a license for short-term rentals. So I know we've had some short-term rentals go on and off in the community, we've seen them on various sites. Um, so we just wanted to bring this forward to see if the city council wanted to remove any of these forward.
Because the question I'm gonna ask is, for the ones that have existed so far, have we been able to get the hotel room tax because the Airbnbs essentially operate as like a hotel?
It's a good question that I don't have an answer to, the the answer should be yes. Um, that the law allows us to c- to calculate and we should be collecting the those room taxes. My 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 guess is that we haven't been because there hasn't been a license issued to them. Um, so i- if we move forward with this and we require a license, that would then help us to make sure we are capturing those dollars from the taxes.
Knowing that our Convention and Visitors Bureau is actually funded by those hotel room dollars, I I think it would be important if we were to move forward with anything that involves um, that that permits them, that there should be the capture of the hotel room tax for Welcome to Glendale. So Alderman Bukovic? You need to speak into your microphone.
Hello, okay, I would check, cuz I do have two, three residents that do do Airbnb. And we should be getting a check from Airbnb people because it is part of their thing, um, they collect taxes on it. But de- depending on what city it is, and then it's sent to the city, so I would just check to see if we have, I know you may not know because of, you know, the short time you've been here, but I would check cuz I think we do if they're Airbnb or one of those areas.
Yeah, we will definitely check on that, we do get a report from all the hotels of how much money and revenue we receive annual from the taxes, so I'll see if that report does include the short-term rentals.
I'm gonna ask if we've had any complaints about the existing properties that are currently operating as Airbnbs, and that may be for the chief or for the city administrator. Have we had any complaints about Airbnbs?
No complaints that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I couldn't even tell you which houses do it. We've had a number of complaints come to the city hall, and as I stated in in my memorandum, um, ma- mainly they've been nuisance stuff, like there's different people in our neighborhood or strange cars that I haven't seen in the house. It hasn't been a factor of, you know, there's a hundred people, there's a party, people are coming and going at two o'clock in the morning. Not to say that couldn't happen, but that hasn't been the circumstances that we've seen, and that's sort of what prompted this in conversations um, that have occurred.
Alderman? I know, um, I have one um, Airbnb in my district, and I'm not sure if the owner's with us here today, I did give them notice about this. And they did have um, a complaint from a neighbor to me as alderman, but upon investigation, it turned out it was the owner who was in residency at the time, not the short-term rental. So they were having a party themselves, so uh, in in general, um, I don't want to do something, in my opinion, that would prevent this because I think there is a value that is provided and it is someone's home, but I do think we perhaps should get ahead of it because it is starting to become more prevalent, like it used to be a lot more sparse, now it's starting to become a lot easier to um, to do this with VBRO and Airbnb, and I guess I'm more concerned about the ones that are not um, going through those, what I would say, quality control.
Yeah, we were surprised to see when we looked it up at a staff level, there was about a dozen that were on different um, Airbnb websites that are throughout the city of Glendale.
Um, I have, one of my Airbnbs have been going on for, I think, three years. The first week he had it, it was a disaster, I mean, because it was just, um, it wasn't, they didn't do anything wrong, it was just, you know, people were, you know, um, in front of the house, but once he put, I think he has a minimum of like five days. And then it's, but I I don't want, and I have a problem where we're start, overall, we're starting to over-regulate what's happening on public streets, if somebody wants to park on a public street, whether you live there or not, the, everybody pays for that public street. And I just, I mean, even in front of my house where I have businesses that park in front of my house, I shouldn't, I mean, it's a public street, I get maybe at night. But during the day, and and if it's nothing there, it's a public street, you have ordinances that protect overnight parking, and then the day is the day unless there is restrictions. I just, sometimes we overreach to please things when it's not a problem at the time. Where we don't have, there's not a lot of crime connected to these, these are, you know, they're doing, they're, the owners seem to be doing their due diligence of who they're putting it in. Why do we sometime create a problem when there isn't one except for some person next door who may not like it, but it's their property?
Alderman Gallhard?
Just a question for Attorney Bear, are are we not just uh, simply talking about regulation of residential dwellings that are being used uh, for rental purposes?
Yes, that's correct, and um, yeah, and also I commend the the city for trying to get out ahead of this because I I have seen in other communities where as the organizations like VRBO and Airbnb have have become more have prolific, percolated, uh, profylated, uh, the uh, there has been some growing pains and, you know, there's, there's good and bad as we go through those growing pains and and there have been some issues with, you know, complaints and 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 noise and things like that, but I do wanna remind everybody that the, there is a license that's required through the Wisconsin um, uh, Department of Agriculture Trade Consumer Protection. And that what they actually do is they license these uh, through an agreement with the local health department. So if we do end up with a problem property and um, there seems to be recurring theme where, you know, there's rentals on weekends where there's wild parties and there's people, you know, they're not being respectful to the neighbors or those types of things. We can reach out and 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 Brad, Brad Simmerly has kind of been the point person for the North Shore. All right, Brad Simmerly has been the point person for the North Shore Health Department on this in particular, and I actually talked to him this afternoon. Um, and 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 when there ha- have been kind of those those problem areas, they've been able to to make contact with with the owner and and make sure that um, you know, that there's, there's a proper uh, license there, but but with that comes some minimum standards. For example, um, you know, you can't just throw yourself up on the internet and then start renting right away, you gotta have, you know, there's, there's technical requirements associated with ingress and egress and uh, um, you know, sanitation, there's minimum sanitation standards and there's other things that apply. And generally, what Brad has been doing is working in conjunction with the local inspector um, in whatever North Shore community mi- it might be. And if there is a problem, they can go out and they they have the power to do an inspection and to make sure that that institution or that that uh, property is properly licensed and that they meet all the minimum um, health standards and all of the uh, building code standards. So that is one tool that we've used in the North Shore, in other communities to sort of work collaboratively and try to correct problems as they've occurred. So I just wanted to mention a little bit about what the state has done um, at the state level, so what what they've said is they changed the law and they've banned rentals, or or they've said that local municipal municipalities are free to ban rentals of less than seven days. Um, so that, you know, oh, you could ban short-term rentals. I'll tell you why that's essentially meaningless, though, because what we've seen in communities that have done that is what these, the Airbnb and the VRBO, they're very smart about this, they, they'll just post the the rental for a week. Even if they're only, there's only gonna be somebody there from Thursday through Sunday or Friday to Sunday, and then they just adjust the price accordingly. And what what happens is if there's a big, there's people coming in for a weekend for a reunion or one of the festivals or something, you know, that's just what they do, they price it essentially, you're paying for the weekend, but technically it's a rental for seven days. And then when there's something longer or more significant, like if there's a, there's a political, uh, can, uh, uh, you know, like the 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 convention, thank you, that was the word I was searching for, you know, then they'll rent it for maybe a week or, you know, more, but so what 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 really all you can do then is is if um, the rentals are gonna be between seven and twenty-nine days, then you can limit those to a maximum of a hundred and day, a hundred and eighty days per year, which you can't pick. Um, they they they're, the renter is supposed to tell you the first day on which they're gonna rent, and then, you know, you can limit the hundred and twenty-day period, so. Those are, in my mind, the statute is essentially meaningless because there's so many ways to get around it, so what I've found is, you know, is is um, you try to work collaboratively with the property owners that are renting these things so that they're being good stewards and good neighbors. And um, if when you have problems, we've been working collaboratively with the North Shore Health Department and the local inspector to try to address those issues. And the police department, you know, if someone's out being disorderly at the middle of the night or, you know, on the neighboring neighboring property, the police can respond to those. And, you know, and we try to, we try to do what we can collaboratively, and and if there is a problem, we try to work with the homeowner, but.
Alderman Gallhard had a follow-up.
Yeah.
So I've got a a Marriott long-term stay in my district, and and if we ban uh, rentals of shorter than seven days, would that not affect them, or or would they be accepted because they're commercial?
Yeah, that's a different, um, this is, yeah, that's a different, that's a different kind of a a regulation on a hotel there, um. This is a residential dwelling unit that's otherwise, you know, basically just your your residential homes in 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 your residential areas, so that wouldn't, yeah, I mean, that that would be a different.
Alderman Bailey and Alderman Shaw.
I'd say questions, but as much of we're kind of a a reading through the packet of ma- material provided. Um, I I I agree with getting the just dues for our Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, but to create a second class of regulation for for noise complaints, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and I I would say that that should just be universal, whether my neighbor decided to be loud or a a rental, um, is just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to regulate just this one specific business, I, cuz I I I I I might have partaken in some Airbnbs where you're almost supposed to stay for a few number of days, and then, nope, yep, we're canceling, we're leaving, so, you know, it's the other way around it.
Sure, sure, and you know, it's
And to your point on on the tax, that is one thing that you can do on the local level, you can impose, you know, you can, you can, you can impose an additional tax upon it. Um, if if you wanna, if you wanna go that route.
Alderman Scholzling? So with the, the approach with the health department, so typically you think of that as a, as a enforcing health, like occupancy, is it safe for for residents to rent it out to to tenants? If we were to have, like, I I hate to say it, but really you're always putting these rules in place for the couple of bad actors and everybody else has to deal with it, it's it's unfortunate. Um, but if you do have someone who's renting and they are not picking out good tenants, the the person in my district, I talked with them, they're up and up, they have cameras up, they check in with the tenants as they come in the the day of to make sure they have everything they need. Also, tell them if they need anything, they know they're there, um, they live locally, a- all those sort of things. And they also found, as I think um, Alderman Bukovic said, it was rough at first cuz they were having some challenges with tenants, and then they found that they put in a two-day limit and did some other things themselves, they were able to really be upstanding, they got like almost five stars, so yay. Um, all things said, how does the health department address the opposite if someone is constantly getting, let's say, nuisance fines, circuit court, that all costs the city money. Um, and then it's, if the the landlord's still renting it out because they get revenue, they don't really have an incentive to stop, so can they actually revoke a license?
Sure, they can, um, if, you know, if they violate any of the terms and conditions as outlined in the ATP or ATCP um, regulations under the Administrative Code. Um, but also, though, to to your point earlier that that that, you know, there are normal uh, or I'm sorry, it was someone else made the point that that there are otherwise ordinances under the code that prohibit, you know, uh, disorderly conduct or loud noise after certain hours and those things like that. And, you know, I mean, uh, cite, a municipal citation can be issued. Um, and if if it, if if a property becomes problematic enough, there's always, you know, they always have the option of attempting to declare a public nuisance and handling it that way. And to be fair, you know, uh, there's certainly with long-term rentals, you know, that aren't Airbnb or VRBO, you know, you might get issues with a tenant. Um, and you might have, you know, now, I I have had neighbors say, well, let me invite you over on a weekend when there's a group of people there in town for a a family reunion and and you can tell me if you like it or not, and and I get that. Um, and we understand that, but again, you know, the the state has put this regulatory structure in place. So there's, you know, we we have a limited amount of options on how we can handle that. Um, and 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 I've also been, you know, in municipal court where an owner has been issued a citation because of some things that have gone on at the property, and they've just told us we we make way more, you know, through VRBO or Airbnb than we would, than we did when we rented it on a year-to-year basis under a regular lease, and so if we have to pay the occasional ticket, so be it, we're making way more money, so. You know, there there's a push-pull there and and there's always gonna be that balancing and and we try to do the best we can with with um, enforcement. We try to be good stewards, you know, as a municipality, working in conjunction with the property owners, but you're right, sometimes there's a bad apple and and, you know, and and we and we try to, we try to enforce the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you have a follow-up? So if, really, it comes down to, if we wanna do something more than just the health department working with them, we'd still have to actually have them as a nuisance or, you know, take them to circuit court to get rid of them, so to say. Um, the only other option is we do just a a local license as an ordinance, and then they would just license, and we just provoke the license without going to circuit court if they have like too many ordinance violations.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could probably, you know, I think you can make a pretty valid argument that if 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 it's essentially becoming a nuisance property where there's citations being issued multiple times a month, you could probably, we could probably work in conjunction with ATCP through the health department and pull a lot, pull a license, um, you know, there 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 could be grounds for that. You know, you, we try to work with try to work within the framework as defined by the statute, and again, you know, the very, very powerful lobby, you know, they got favorable, they have favorable laws, so. Um, we do what we can and and uh, and we and we try to work collaboratively and hope, we hopefully that the problem properties are less than the uh, you know, the good, the good, the good properties. But I think really the question generally is, do you want to, um, you know, do 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 you wanna look at a tax, I think, is? Um, you know, do, do, do you want to look at a tax, I think is, you know, is, is kind of the question, uh. Above and beyond.
So Alderman Bukovic and then I've got some comments, so go ahead.
As I look at your recommendations, the, the four. I want to see what number one, you know, what he drafts up. I'm not in favor of two, I'm not in favor of three, and I'm in favor of four. And the reason being is. I have residents who are snowbirds. They leave and, and fall and they rent their Airbnb out for the winter. It's. It's, it's fewer than a hundred and eighty days, but it helps them, they're retired, you know, so. I, again, I'm, I'm stressing that. If it's not a huge problem. And we are not, we, there's thirteen thousand plus people in the city. If only point, point zero zero five percent have issues, let's work to try to fix their issues. Not affect every single person that's in the city. So I would rather work to see the city go to that one particular possible nuisance place or, and say. Owner, we're having an issue. We really don't want to change it for the whole city. What can you do? How can we help you? Or whatever the sense is. Then having to change it for everybody else who are complying and don't have any complaints are actually doing the right things on it. Like I said, I had one that it was horrible the first time. He changed, he, he tweaked it a little bit. And even the neighborhoods say they really don't have a big problem anymore and it's only one or two cars and they're here and then they go. So that's my thing on that.
So my thought is, I think that we should license them. And licensure does two things. One, it makes sure that we capture the hotel room tax for Welcome to Glendale. Uh, the second thing that licensure does is it gives us a list of all the properties. So when the PD gets a call saying. There's strange people in my neighborhood and they, they want to send a squad out, we can say where. And if that address, that's an Airbnb, the people you're calling about are renting the property. As opposed to having to send out the police to make a check on it if. You, um, so I, I think, I, I personally would like to see a licensure and for those two purposes. And I don't know that we need to do much of any of the other things. I guess I'm in agreement with some of the other comments that have been made. So. Um, so that, we're giving direction right now to the city administrator and the city attorney. So does anybody? I, I, I've thrown out two things. If anybody wants to add any final comments, I think they've got enough direction from us. Go ahead, Alderman Doherty.
I just say less is more. If we don't have a problem yet, I don't want to see us start trying to regulate something that's not as. Much of a problem. So I, I'm more interested in seeing, are you getting revenue? Is that coming in already? If it is, then I don't know if I'm even interested to go that far. Cause we don't have a problem yet. I mean, I think it's great. You studied this. I think it's great. We got some. Direction, but I'm always in favor of less things to burden everybody if we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look into both of that and we will get back to you at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the next item is a, a review and possible referral to the plan commission on an ordinance. Creating section thirteen point one point eighteen regarding home occupations. Uh, it involves deleting one part and uh adding another part of the ordinance. We did have some language that was sent out to us. Um, I know I've got three people that have asked to speak to this. I wanted to say before I do so. Um, so what the impetus was behind this particular um, uh, ordinance. We had a couple of complaints, um, probably the middle part of the year, but a couple of different. Things that people were operating businesses out of their homes that had become nuisances to neighbors. And so, uh, one was a veterinarian that wanted to offer an urgent care clinic in their, in their home. Uh, for after hours. So basically people could come and go in the middle of the night with their sick pet to, to his home. Um, and, you know, we drew the line at that, uh, as a city, saying that that would, that, that didn't qualify as a home occupation. Operating the clinic out of your home in the middle of the night. Um, we tried to encourage that individual to work through a, a business property. Um, turns out they already had a veterinary clinic. We also had somebody else that wanted to build an addition on their home. And then operate a business with employees coming and going out of that addition to their home. Our feeling, and because we've talked about home occupations here, especially with the beginning of the pandemic, when so many people were working from home. Is that most things people do at home, you know, occupations, working from home, uh, don't create nuisances for neighbors. Right? If you are, you know, if you're a CPA, if you're an engineer, if you're, you know, doing custom framing for people's wedding pictures, you know, all sorts of things you can do from your home. If you're baking wedding cakes, I mean, all sorts of things that you could do that don't involve, that don't create a nuisance for neighbors. But if you want to, you know, turn your basement into a yoga studio and offer hourly classes with fifteen or twenty people. That are parking on your street every hour, coming and going, that ceases to be a home occupation. And really becomes something that's much more suitable for one of our business districts in the city. And so we directed, we had a conversation here about a couple of those complaints and the council actually directed staff some months ago. To come back with tightening up that language so that essentially it permits most things that people do or already doing. But says, we're going to sort of draw a line at the things that might create a nuisance. So, you know, I'm not going to turn my garage into an auto repair shop. Right? So, cause that would bother my neighbors. So those are the sort of things. And so I think that, that what was brought to us tonight. Um, I'm going to actually ask the council when we're done tonight to lay it over to our next meeting before we would refer it to the plan commission. Because I would like to get actually some more input, um, uh, continue to get more input from the public. So having framed that, I know there's three people that want to speak tonight. And so this isn't getting approved tonight. Uh, if anything, it's, if the most that would happen tonight is it would be referred to the plan commission. But I do have three people that want to speak. And so, uh, first is Brian Swanson. So I know you've, I know I just said your name, but if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Swanson, eighteen twenty West Waysay Drive. It's pretty obvious that this ordinance is going to disproportionately affect blue collar trades. Craftsman and artisans within our community. Things like woodworking with power tools, pottery for those who need to go and use a kiln. Those that may be creating epoxy jewelry, even baked goods, the way this is written and three D printing. One of the other things that I noticed is there are a comment about electrical interference with transmissions. Radio and television. This is already covered under FCC part fifteen and should frankly be eliminated. Then there's C five, which essentially goes and eliminates the use of a number of these trades because of the chemicals in use. Such as everyday chemicals we may already have in our homes, such as isopropyl alcohol, epoxy wood finishes. Uh, paint thinner, paint, things like that. That's just kind of overkill and needs to be clarified better. Um, and then there's a talk about radioactive materials. Every single one of us already have radioactive materials in our home. And our smoke detectors, lithium ion batteries. This needs to. Yeah, every single one of us has a cell phone probably in this room. So we're sitting here, got radiation arousal ready at safe levels. Within products and needs to be clarified to sit there and say something to the effect of only radioactive materials. In products already existing in our homes at safe levels. And then D one talks about square footage. I can to some degree understand this. But at the same time, it's going to limit anyone who needs machinery with what their, their ability to do. Um, anyone who's using machine, machinery in this community is going to probably have their doors closed. Anyways, to begin with and operating inside because of concerns with uh moisture and water ingress into their equipment and rustiness. So it's, noise shouldn't really be an issue there. Um, then there's paragraph D four, uh, wedding planners and officiants. Obviously, the people may go and have more than three clients on their property to sit there and for religious. Uh, consultation, religious um ceremonies or also religious uh. Counseling. This is going, some of these things are going to fall into First Amendment violations potentially. And this one here. Um, my concern is that. Just the limitation is going to be a big issue for a couple of people in our community, I already know. And potentially changing that to. Having a maximum, but also having an exception where maybe they have to go and call in advance and request the, be able to. Have a variance for a short period of time for maybe a day or so, or so many times per year that they can do this. I talked about how many different occupations there are, but we're all sitting here, those who do go and use. Different equipment, we're doing our best to sit there and wear PPE, uh, minimize noise, dust, pollution, things to that effect. Um, and my suggestion too is, if you're going to sit here and go and limit occupations, don't do that. Instead, go unlimited to certain hours of the day, between like seventy AM and seven PM and between Monday and Friday. This is going to give our neighbors a reprieve if there is any noise complaints that may occur. And also working with the business owners where there are complaints, such as the ones that have been mentioned previously already and working with them. Uh, maybe like a parking ordinance instead, expanding that to have only parking on one side of the street. And start it with the targeted areas where there haven't known issues first, and then rolling it out to a rescue community over maybe a five-year period. Um, I'm going to ask you guys, as you noted, you're going to erase the desk table. I'm going to suggest the same thing. And everyone have some careful thought about this before going forward with this. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next is Rob Cromwell.
Hi, Robert Cromwell, seventy-five thirty North Applewood Lane. Um, yeah, when, when I'd heard about this, I thought, oh, that, that'll be interesting. And then when I started reading it, I. Couldn't believe how restrictive this actually is as written. It is. Insanely restrictive. Um. When you have sections in here that indicate, uh, no mechanical equipment shall be used on the premise except. Such that is normally used on site domestic or household, for domestic or household purposes. Well, three D printers are more common now, but I wouldn't call them a common household item. Uh, you were talking about a home art architect or designer. Well, they use those giant blueprint printers in their home. Um, but that's not a common item. That wouldn't be permitted. Uh, anybody using woodworking equipment, I mean. Some of it's semi-common, but a lot of it's, you know, not. Um. You're restricting the number of people that come, come through. Uh, the mayor used an example of, uh, running a yoga studio out of your home. Well, my wife actually did that for a little while before the pandemic. Um, but she was only a couple of classes a week and only for an hour and a half. And we usually didn't have more than five people, but that still exceeds the three that's allowed in the ordinance. And on a couple of occasions, she moved the class outside when the weather was nice. And that's also not allowed under the ordinance. Um, it seems like you're not using a scalpel to attack the. Few problems we've had with home occupancy businesses and you used, you're just tossing a hand grenade out of the community. Not realizing just how much damage it does. I. You, you banned animal breeding? I mean, so if I breed my dog and put up a sign saying puppies for sale. I'm violating the ordinance. I mean, it, I'm not necessarily making a business out of it, but just these common actions that happen in our community. Are prohibited in a violation. And I don't think you're realizing exactly how encompassing this is when you apply it. I. I ask you to just think of a few, I mean, I don't know how many of you have done home businesses or know people that do. But actually look through this, think about how you operate a business like that. And realize that this ordinance probably doesn't allow it to happen anymore. I, I saw there was some other restrictions. Oh, I, there was an exception in here. To seem to allow like Tupperware parties and pampered chef parties to happen after seven PM. But the problem is that the way those products are worked and sold. They're going to be displaying the products in the home, which is also prohibited in another section. They're going to be having them delivered to the home and they're going to warehouse them temporarily before they distribute them, which is also prohibited in another section. So even though. You're trying to say you can still do the pampered chef parties and the Tupperware parties, you can't because of the way the rest of the ordinance is worded. I, it's just really, really over restrictive and overreaching. Um, if you're having problems with parking on a cul-de-sac, ban overnight parking on cul-de-sacs. Uh, you had a problem with the veterinary clinic, there's ways to address that or specifically ban veterinary clinics. I mean. You can ban certain home occupations that you know are going to cause problems. Um, but this is just so overreaching. It, it just reminds me the whole ordinance about. Making it illegal to pour any fat or oil down your drain. Again, I mean, it just made it illegal for anybody to operate a normal kitchen. Oh, and when you talk about baking cakes, you can't do that here either. It's specifically prohibited to do home baking. And home bakers and home food preparers just won several cases in the state Supreme Court. So they're not required to use a commercial kitchen anymore, so that they can do the baking and the home prep from home. And we're just going to go ahead and ban it apparently. So I.
Uh, just, I, and you, you keep, you keep saying, you know, you as if the collective you as if we wrote this ordinance. This ordinance is funny. This is actually taken from ordinances that already exist in Mecklenburg-Bayern and Fox Point. So. For those of you who have friends in Mecklenburg-Bayern and Fox Point, you may want to tell them that this is what their ordinances look like.
And I know that's how it works. Usually it gets incorporated for somewhere else.
Right.
But I also had a family friend that was operating a kennel, a home kennel in Mecklenburg for decades and. Apparently never had a problem, but it might have been against the ordinance. So I. I don't know, it, it's just, it's very, very, if it's applied as written, which it should be. If you write an ordinance like this, you should enforce it the way it's written. And not pretend it doesn't exist or only, only come down on people that get a complaint. I mean, it should affect everybody equally. Um, it's just, it makes most home businesses unworkable and a violation of the law. So.
And Lars.
All right. Thank you. My name is Lars Wolk. I live on fifty-seven zero five North Sunny Point Road. Um, I'm, I don't know if I would say I'm entirely in favor of the ordinance as it is written. Um, but I, when I saw it, I, I kind of thought, oh, this. Seems like maybe, um, this was, um, this was brought in because of an issue that I'm having. It turns out it's not. It was related to the. A request for the, the veterinary clinic. Um, but I have been having an issue, um, where a, a paratransit company. Um, started operating out of the cul-de-sac that I live in. Um, and that has, um, I've been able to see that business grow over time, um, in my cul-de-sac. Uh, it started out with a couple of vans. I actually thought it was just some people maybe helping remodel or something like that. I didn't really understand. Um, why they were there yet. Um, but it started to grow and it turned into, um. I, I think between six and eight minivans, um, that were operating out of that cul-de-sac all the time. And they were parked there overnight. They were, um, they were parked there during the day. They'd be switched out with employees. Who were coming in and then leaving. Um, they'd maybe park a personal car there, take one of the minivans out and then switch out. Maybe come in during lunch, something like that. Um, so it's just a huge amount of traffic came up. Some of my friends were asking me, hey, what's going on over there? And I was just like, I think somebody started running some kind of transit company out of here. Um, they started putting signs on the vehicles and that's when I started to figure out, okay, obviously that's what's going on. Um. I've got two three-year-old boys, twins, um, and then I've got a six-year-old. And I used to be able to just kind of let her go and bike around in our cul-de-sac. You know, she'd have to watch out for the neighbors coming home or whatever. Um, but it was generally a safe place for her to bike around a little bit. And then we could go with her and go down to Parkway or something like that. Um, really stopped doing that because of the amount of traffic and just the fact that there were all of these vehicles parked along there. It was much harder to see if somebody was coming out of a driveway. And it really is just not a place that is, you know, it's a, it's a residential cul-de-sac. It's not designed to have, you know, some company parking its fleet of vehicles in there. So, um. I began doing what I believed was within my power. And that was to, um, basically call and make complaints about overnight parking. I did this for a while. Um, there's no limit in the cul-de-sac. There's no, you know, four-hour, two-hour limit or anything like that. You just park there. Uh, for overnight parking, you do have to get a permit. So I started calling about that. Called about that for a while. Nothing really seemed to change. Um, I had to basically call and ask the police to come and. Send a squad, enforce overnight parking. Um, and then maybe sometime later find out what happened because. Um, that's between two and six AM that that could be enforced. So it was difficult to actually talk to the officer and find out what was going on. So sometimes they would come, um, and, and this is how I found out they were actually issued permits. Um, I then complained about that to City Hall saying, hey, you know, this is an obvious, um. Commercial use, this shouldn't qualify for overnight permits. Those got overturned. They've started, they've adjusted to that, but are still operating out of the cul-de-sac. Um, they'll. Um, put their personal cars in the street instead, park the minivan, the, the commercial vehicles in the driveway and, and so on. Um, so it's still really not a safe place for young kids to be. Walking around, um, or, or trying to learn how to. Walking around, um, or, or trying to learn how to ride bikes in, in what, when I purchased the home. Was a, you know, quiet residential area, not a commercial parking lot. Um, so I'm in favor of, you know, maybe not this exactly as it is written, but something where I don't have to. You know, track down individual parking violations in hopes to somehow, you know, make this. You know, not worth the, the cost of operating out of a residential cul-de-sac.
Thank you. And you did send me a picture of a whole line of minivan song in the cul-de-sac. So. Um, so I guess this gives staff some, some direction here. We, we have before us an ordinance that's been proposed. And the request is that we refer to the plan commission. Um, I'm going to actually ask if, if staffs can take some of the input today. And see if you can come up with something that, that helps trying to draw what that line is. I mean, obviously running a paratransit company and a cul-de-sac in a residential neighborhood, not an appropriate use of a residential, uh, parcel of land. Probably more appropriate to one of our, you know, industrial parks where we have garages where you can store all those cars at night and things of that nature. So, um, but some of these other things, most of these other businesses that people have talked about are things that people do in their homes anyway. So if you can tighten up language and I'm going to ask today for a motion to lay this over to our next meeting. So we'll do a second reading at our next meeting. Where we may have changes in the second reading before it gets sent to the plan commission.
Did I just make one comment quickly, Mayor? Um, yeah, so sometimes, um, we, we receive phone calls regarding home occupations. John Fellowes is main, um, employee. Who receives the, you know, call on home occupations. The current ordinance has no examples of what would be permitted or prohibited. So it's really sometimes a struggle and a judgment call of what do we tell people it's permitted or not permitted? So that again was a precipitous of, let's just put something in place that provides us a, um, us direction as a staff from the city council. As to what would be an allowable and not allowable home occupation.
There, I understand what the purpose of this is, but literally this is white collar jobs are okay to do. But the blue collar jobs are not okay, even though there are tons of people who do those, those, those works. I know a lady who's in my district that has been doing it for years and she, she does it in her house. There's so many things wrong with this ordinance. It make, that, that bugged me especially with the, um. Clusivity of where you can work. If it's a daycare, they have to go all over their house. Um, if I want to sit on the couch and do some work, I'm not in that area. I know these things seem really asinine. But the way these are written and the way people like to call on people these days. This could be just a neighbor getting irritated by another neighbor and wanting to call on something. I really, really strongly disagree with ninety percent of this. And I think we should be doing the opposite way where we are narrowing down. Somebody said narrowing down what cannot be done. And if we find another business that does it, we might have to add that in. Not try to do what we're doing now and just list what can be done and what not. Because there are certain things you can say, no commercial cars in your business. That right there cuts out majority of what his issue is if we put something there like that. If we do, um, no heavy equipment, some of these ordinances that we're complaining about. We already have ordinances in place. They just have to be enforced. So I, I guess that is my biggest thing that this is, it's kind of another overreach where. We have some issues that we can easily try to fix. We should be able to fix his issue. Without changing the whole ordinance or adding a whole ordinance. I don't know how we do it. I'll think about it. Chief, he will be smart and figure it out. But I just think it's, it's, it's a little much. We can figure and, and, and deal with his issue because it's important to him. And his safety of his family without putting the hammer down on all of the other thirty teen, thirteen thousand residents. That may not have an issue with their neighbor doing it or have a problem with it at all. Didn't even know it was being done.
Okay, now, Alderman Doherty.
I'd agree. It's just problematic to try to define everything. I'd always rather go after what is the real problems.
Yeah.
That makes sense. I think less is more and I'd rather see that approach. Thank you.
Can I ask one question as a follow-up? Is there a way to? Get permission to do, I mean, not stop them, but like, and I'm just thinking this out loud. That if everybody who has a home business, you know, just say you get a permit, but then.
Bayside does that. It costs seventy dollars a year.
And then we stop if there is something that is not appropriate. Then we stop it. Now I don't know if it's seventy dollars, but I'm just saying to, to be able to stop something legally and say, no, you don't fit this. This profile because it's not a residential area. I mean, something, but not just list everything. And I guess you, you can think about that and.
Let me just, I'll give you a little, um, feedback. So Fox Point, Mecklenburg and Bayside all have permits. And they range between forty and seventy dollars a year. And every single one of them includes the list of things you can and can't do. Somewhat similar to ours, but a little different. And they generally describe what type of home occupations are allowed and not allowed. You have to sign off on that, that you will not violate any of those when you do it. Our tact on this was it would be complaint basis. We weren't going to have you register. If someone had a complaint because someone was out, you know, you know, um, slicing logs to sell wood in the middle of the night. That be a complaint driven and we could go enforce it then.
Yeah, I just, uh, was contacted right before, uh, today's meeting, uh, from someone that, uh, wanted to point out that. Uh, where there's community-based residential facilities that seems to be, um. Uh, having, that's a violation of the ordinance as written. They pointed out, uh, that. Uh, where we say the operator of every home occupation shall reside in the dwelling unit. Uh, these, the operator of these residential homes or the care centers don't live there. And so they'd be in violation. He also pointed out that, um, there's a prohibition on nursing homes, which is essentially what these are. Uh, and so they, since we're having this looked at again, anyway, I just wanted to point that out that, you know, take a look at that and see. Because we do have residential facilities in the community, um, and the way it's drafted now. They might fall within the violation of these.
And yes, we do have, uh, home daycares that are permitted and they have special statutes in there. I didn't specifically call out those because those are preempted by our law anyway. So yes, there are those in there, but I didn't mention any of those because there's federal and state laws that preempt some of the things that are in here.
Um, generally speaking, um, I, I think we do need something, maybe not this specific. Because we do see issues where we want to be judging everybody fairly between, you know, we don't, I, I don't like the complaint base. I think if this comes in and it comes in and you look at this, you're like, okay, this is definitely something, uh, who would have thought of this job? You know, we're talking, just talking about Airbnb and how that's like changed to how we do residential rentals. We need to have a litmus test. And I think we need a litmus test, but maybe what we also need is we need to have kind of a. I don't know if it'd be an appeal process or a variance process or review process where if there is a complaint, we can find out if, okay, by the letter of the law here. Yes, it's an issue, but there is a way to say, well, really. The intent is to prevent that person from splitting logs in the middle of the night, but actually they're, they're just whittling. It's, it's not a problem. So we have to, I think, find that balance. So I, I, I think it's a starting point. And this is what we do here. It's, we're the, the common council. We kind of are the legislature. Let's, let's refine it and find something that works. And I, I thank everybody who brought feedback in because that's really how we make things better.
I may be looking at it at a different viewpoint, but I definitely agree with a lot of the comments here because me as a crafter, I may not sell my stuff. But I know enough people who are on Etsy and that would be considered a home business. And with respect to that, I wouldn't be able to fall, do any of my crafts on here because I do work with epoxy. I do have machines that people wouldn't have. And me as a, you know, as a hobbyist, that's one thing, but people making a living off of it as a hobby business. I mean, they may have a real income outside of the home, but you definitely have to look at this because some of the hobbyists here that make stuff. Jewelry signage, whatever. For me, even my sewing machine, one of, you know, people wouldn't have some of the sewing machines that I have. So again. Definitely look at it.
I get a motion to lay this over to our next meeting then?
I'll move.
Move Alderman Gellhard, second of Alderman Bukovic. Go ahead, Alderman.
Um, just to comment on, um, kind of the gig economy. Uh, I know one of the things it does restrict kennels. As someone who uses wags and rover, this would limit that. Um, and I do like my dog staying in the area. So I, I know that's just, I know it's a seven-pound chihuahua and I love him. Um, but it's ridiculous. But i- i- it, it does happen to this whole gig economy because to me there's also some ambiguity about what work from home feels like with this ordinance. Um, as someone who runs a business out of my house with, I mean, well, my other half does with multiple employees that would be prohibited by this at this point.
Okay, so there's been a motion to lay this over to our next meeting. It's been properly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of laying over to the next meeting for a second reading, please say aye.
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 Host. Carries, this has been laid over to the next meeting. All right, and staff, you've got input from us on, on language. So. All right, next item is. Um, where are we here? Four E. Oh, this is referral and, uh, review and possible referral to plan commission on ordinance amending title thirteen zoning chapter one. Uh, section thirty-eight, special institution district. And I see Mr. Fellows has come up to talk about this issue.
Just, yeah, there you go. Uh, i- in the S one district right now, there are, uh, criteria. That allow for the side and rear yards to have accessory structures that are located closer than the principal building. Um, but, uh, the code as written does not allow for accessory structures to be closer than thirty-five feet from. Uh, the, what is considered the front yard. Uh, front yards are typically whatever the building is addressed as. Um, and, uh, we are, staff is recommending to, um, allow a very sim- similar sorts of language for the front yards. Uh, for those, uh, institutional uses that are considered, uh, schools within state statutes.
Any questions? Really? This seems pretty straightforward. So. Yeah, Alderman Schmelzing.
So this is for the work that's being done at Nicolay?
Does allow them to, uh, proceed with some of their visioning for the, uh, covered entrance to the athletic facility.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around a potential use. So thank you. Yes.
Which would not fall within the, wouldn't be having a thirty foot, thirty-five foot setback, but would fall. Would, would qualify if we moved the number and changed the number to fifteen.
In fact, originally with their concept, it was supposed to be some fences and gates and they decided a canopy that would provide shade and, um. Refuge from other rain weather. So it is actually going to be a, um, structure with a roof. Okay. Which would be a, an accessory structure rather than a fence.
All right. So we have, uh, an ordinance amending title thirteen, uh, to with, and the recommendation from staff is that this ordinance. Um, that's been presented to the council, be referred to the plan commission. So can I get a motion to refer this to the plan commission, please? Move, move Alderman Schmelzing. Is there a second?
I can.
Second, Alderman Gellhard. Um, all those in favor of, I'm sorry, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of referring this to the plan commission, please say aye.
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 Host, motion carries. I assume this will be on the February plan commission agenda then.
Yes.
All right. All right, the next item is review and approval, adoption of written procedures designed to foster public participation. Regarding an amendment to the comprehensive plan as required under section sixty-six point one zero zero one of the Wisconsin statutes. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Fellows.
So you all might have recalled back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, you had discussions about the public participation plan for the comprehensive plan. And that, um, resolution was adopted and then the comprehensive plan proceeded and, um, was complete. Um, in re, in preparing for item actually G, uh, which is your, uh, next item on the agenda. The resolution indicated, um, hinted at, um, amendments to the comprehensive plan, but there were no criteria of what. Uh, an update would require. So you'll see before you, staff is proposing, um, adopting. Uh, updated public participation, uh, tools for that. You'll see in the document, everything that was actually adopted back in nineteen is still there. And then basically we've kind of replicated as a part two, uh, which is for updates, which would require public hearing, but would not require as extensive. Um, efforts such as public workshops and things like that.
Basically, the master plan can be amended, but in order to amend or change the master plan, you have to have public input. And we didn't put in the original master plan a provision for how to do the public input. And this is what you're presenting.
Correct. So essentially the way that resolution is, uh, the original resolution is drafted is every time you do an update, you have to go through the entire process. Um, which for some smaller updates, uh, would be fairly extensive, uh.
Considering we did a twenty forty plan.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty. It's bound to change in twenty years. So, all right. All right. So, uh, we do have now, um, procedures that have been presented by staff for, um, how to amend the comprehensive plan. Can I get a motion to adopt, please? Moved by Commissioner Bailey, or sorry, Alderman Bailey. Too many years. And second about Alderman Bukovic, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. Uh, next item is review and possible referral to the plan commission on an amendment to the comprehensive master plan. Um, and this is what involved for land use classification for the planned mixed use for Meta House at forty-one sixty North Port Washington Road. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Fellows.
So as, uh, kind of hinted at in, uh, item F above, uh, we do have an application for, um, a use. Um, currently there on Port Washington Road at forty-one sixty, that property is classified in the comprehensive plan as industrial. It actually currently is also zoned industrial. Um, the prospective new, um, tenant or owners of the, um, property. Are looking to, um, have some, um, offices as well, as well as residential, um, um. Medical type, uh, facilities there, which do not fall under the industrial category, both in zoning. Um, and so, uh, they put in a request to rezone the property. However, state statutes do, uh, after, do require after twenty-ten. That any rezonings concur with your master plan. So therefore rezoning industrial out of industrial into something else. But your land use plan has, um, industrial, we end up in this situation. And so, um, essentially we're recommending that that, uh, classification be changed. Um, and it would go through a process. It will go through planning commission. We'll have public hearings. Um, and then following that, there would be their rezoning request, um, and which would be for a planned development district. Um, so essentially that's the request. And this would be a referral to the planning commission to move the full process forward.
This is a, a similar change to eight homes on Port Washington Road. Wanted to be, he's, they had to change the land use first and then go through the rezoning process. So this is the first step here. So you're asking for, uh, recommend a, or for a, a vote tonight from us to refer this then to the plan commission.
Correct.
All right.
So moved.
Move Alderman Doherty. Is there a second? Second, Alderman Bukovic. Um, all those in favor of referring, uh, this item to the plan commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. All right, next one is also a referral to the plan commission. This is a map amendment for Spreaker. And it, uh, map amendment that would then change the, uh, a recommendation to change the zoning from a class B one. To an M one warehouse district. And I'll turn it back over to, uh, Mr. Fellows.
Or this is a request to rezone, uh, Spreaker, as you know, uh, maybe you don't know, they actually have three parcels. Um, so we're talking about the, uh, most southern point of the, uh, facility. It would be the warehouse. That, uh, is attached to the brick colonial. Um, but it's just the warehouse portion to be rezoned, um, from B one P. Which is a business and commercial district to an M one, uh, warehouse, light manufacturing office. They, um, as you know, are a growing company and they have, uh, secured storage units and other, and other warehousing and other areas of the. Um, uh, community and adjacent communities in this warehouse building. They would like to use more, um, efficiently. That type of thing. And so they would like to rezone the property, um, so they can use it as a, a full-fledged warehouse for. Um, incoming and outgoing supplies and product.
All right, yes. Microphone.
Are they taking care of all the things they needed to take care of?
Um, I think.
Or working through it.
They're working through it, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a recommendation then to refer this to the plan commission. Can I get a recommended, or can I get a motion to refer to the plan commission? Like an Alderman Bukovic, second Alderman Gellhard. Any further discussion? All those in favor of referring to the plan commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Host, motion carries. Next item, item I is also review and possible referral to the plan commission. I think this is all those homes that we've purchased and demolished. And now it's changing the zoning to conservancy to match the park around. conservancy to match the park around it.
Correct. Here you, you read it. You read your report. Correct.
Yes.
Uh, so these properties um, extend to one parcel that is uh, just behind uh, uh, the elementary school across the street. And then all the rest are actually farther up. Um, that we've acquired over the last number of years um, through the MMSD uh, funding. Um, there is one parcel uh, that is actually owned by um, the MMSD, but the rest of the parcels are actually owned by the city of Glendale.
All right. Can I get a motion then to refer this to the plan commission?
I could make one comment real quick. There is one property that we did purchase that is not included on here, which is the property where um, we have a life tenancy agreement for the crane property. Um, that home will still be lived in um, by the person who owns it. And that's the property to be used for the fist passions. Once the home is demolished and the person vacates the property, we'll bring this back hopefully with more properties in a couple of years to change the zoning on that one.
Okay. And C one conservancy is the very restrictive uh, level of zoning that we've put on all of our parkland in the city as opposed to just designating it as parkland.
And the deed restrictions at the time of purchase of these properties do restrict it to basically a walking paths and forestry and goats to eat up the noxious um, items. So there's not much we can do with it otherwise.
Right, right. All right. So all those in favor of referring to the plan commission, please say aye.
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 Host. Motion carries. There was a motion there, wasn't there? Somebody, okay, that's right.
Up and so.
Oh, Vukovich made a motion and Galhard seconded. Or was that the one?
That was the prior one.
Oh, then we've, okay. Can I get a motion to refer to the plan commission?
So moved.
Moved by Bailey, seconded by Shaw, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Host. Okay. Pass.
Cause I had a stroke.
Okay. Well, what we've just done tonight at the common council meeting is we've just lived through the entire agenda for the next plan commission. Okay. Glad you all could join us for a plan commission meeting as well. All right. Next is a review and approval of a distribution easement for underground electric and communications in the North Shore Water Commission grounds. And I will turn this over to staff.
Well, I'll answer this one pretty quickly. If you need any more details, Charlie is definitely here to answer those. Uh, North Shore Water Commission uh, received a request for a very small easement on their property. Uh, the city would obtain two hundred dollars for the season. So we could shut down for a day. Um, uh, and this is for we energy spectrum and Wisconsin bell. Uh, this is a part of the, sorry, utility relocation um, as a result of the I forty three expansion project. So I believe it's what a twelve by ten area, something like that.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Alderman Doherty?
They're shutting down for part of a day.
Okay. Okay. Can I get um, a motion to approve the distribution easement, please?
Moved.
I can Baldur Miguel hard, second by Doherty. Any discussion? Seeing none, a call for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carries.
I'm just curious, is two hundred dollars enough?
I don't know. And it's two hundred dollars to us, two hundred dollars to Fox Point and two hundred dollars to Whitefish Bay, because the three communities own the North Shore Water Utilities. Yeah. All right. Next item K. This is an agreement for operation of the North Shore Municipal Court. And um, I actually had Judge Litzum want to speak to this, but he is currently in the lobby. So. Judge Lipscomb?
You were quick.
We're on your agenda item. So you wanted to speak to uh, item K.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Christopher. Twenty-three forty west Wing Gate Avenue. Bringing my professional capacity as a municipal judge for the city Glendale and North Shore Municipal Court. I'm objecting to some of a, a specific language. It's under paragraph number five court personnel. It's specifically number A for the clerk. This is a selection of the clerk of the municipal court shall be by the administrative committee. Excuse me. The clerk must be appointed by the judge pursuant to Wisconsin statute, et cetera. Service background. I'll actually be finishing twenty-five years as Glendale's municipal judge is the end of April. Um, about ten years ago, we added the village of Brown Deer and I think it's been two out for the village. I'd. I think I'm also the longest serving municipal judge in Milwaukee County at the present time. Uh, all the other ones who are older have since retired. So there isn't, I think I've got a good institutional memory on this, but I have an issue that the because we are a joint court, that the rules are slightly different. It's not so much run by the council as it is by the administrators in this particular setup. The law I think is pretty clear. This says the court has to appoint the clerk or clerks. I set the hours, I hire and fire them essentially, though the community still have the authority, you get to set. How many I get to have, though you have to give me one, the hour, the wages and benefits are all set by the communities and not set by the court. But I, I think that the uh, agreement as it's written is in, is improper and incorrect. I more than have answered some other questions if the members of the council would have them. Um, because the statute of things is very clear as to what my authority is over my clerk or clerks, because I do actually have two various courts.
Um, so I, I think what you're saying is you would want us to look at a, approving this, but with a change to five A. Uh, I would say essentially striking the first sentence. So it just reads the clerk must be appointed by the judge pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Seven fifty-five dash ten.
Correct.
Or dot ten.
So I guess I'll say that um, we've met probably two or three times with the judge to review this contract. This language was not brought up at any of those um, past times. And I am seeing it right now. And I do know the state law requires that the judge appoint the clerk. Um, this has gone to all the other communities and they've approved it. And we are the last one. So I guess I'm just a little surprised that it's being brought up now when we reviewed this in the past two or three times.
Well, I'm glad we're catching it and not passing something that violates the state statute. So I don't know. Can we be, can the other communities bring it back up with that, with that change in the language?
Brown Deer passed it last meeting, correct Nathan?
Right. And I guess uh, the one, the one comment I would make is I, I think the reason that it's written that way, it says the salary of the judge shall be set by majority of the governing bodies of the member municipalities. Uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, the selection of the clerk shall be by the administrative committee. And it references the administrative committee rather than the council only because it's a conglomerate of three communities for the court. And what the statute says is as a judge noted, it says the council or board um, shall authorize at least one clerk for each court. And the judge um, uh, may appoint the personnel that are authorized by the counselor board. So in other words, the, the council decides, you know, you get, you, you either get a secretary or you get, you get one clerk or two clerks or whatever it might be. But then it says, except as provided in sub two, the hiring termination hours of employment and work responsibilities of the court personnel um, that are assigned to the court are under the judge's authority. So the, it's a, it's a combination where the council says, okay, you know, these are the parameters. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna allow you to have one clerk and a secretary or someone else, a part-time, whatever the parameters might be. And then the actual hiring, the final decision on the hiring and the firing is it is, is with, with the judge. So I don't, I don't see it as necessarily there was any intent to hear, hear, or there was any um, anything that was, you know, necessarily adverse to the state statute. But instead of saying council, it just says administrative committee. Because it's a conglomerate, it's, it's the North Shore Court. So there's three communities. So in, in in the case of the village, it's, it's the board. And then in the case of the city here, it's the council. So I think that's all that it really means. But as a practical matter, I, I, in my, the way I read it, it does comport with the statute, but I don't, I don't really care if the first sentence is deleted. I think it's, I think either way it complies with the statute. But then we had do, I didn't realize we do have the problem. I, it had forgotten that some of these other committees have already appointed this thing. So i- in the way that this would be carried out, I certainly wouldn't think that the, the, the communities that make up the North Shore Court would administer this in a manner that would be contrary to the state statute. And, and if, if, you know, certainly if the court felt that there was a problem and didn't want to hire somebody that was put forward, yeah, we would have that discussion.
So have both of the other communities, have they both approved this?
I'm not sure about Bayside, but I knew, but I do know that Brown Deer did.
Okay. I, I guess it's already been, judge, I guess we're hearing here, the interpretation of this, that selection is really just authorizing the number of clerks. And the, 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 the language still states the clerk must be appointed by the judge pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. I do understand your concern. But if we were to approve this tonight, Brown Deer has already approved it. Bayside may have already approved it. Um, it doesn't change the way in which this actually operates. And I think this was in the old agreement as well. This is mostly the same language that we had before, right?
He did not modify this part of the language. The only modifications were included in the one, two and three before.
Right, right. So I guess Judge, are you comfortable with us moving forward, knowing that how this, the practice is, is the way it's been, the same language is in the existing agreement now. It would be in the next agreement, but there's no um.
I do have difficulty with the language. Um, it was not consulted in initial draft when this created years ago. Um, and I would indicate, I did actually send an email regarding this prior to the end of the year for sure, with my objection to that language. But I, my difficulty, not so much has been with city Glendale practically. I've always gotten good results going all the way back to Dick Maslowski. Working on what was need for the court, but I've had pushback um, in other communities as to my inherent authority as the judge. And I am worried that this group, the other councils will, and myself can be different people in any future time. And this won't be remembered, that this is what's going on. It's in, it says right there. Well, that's not what's allowed, even if it's says right there.
Yeah, I don't want us to go forward with some wording that the very person it's affecting.
Right.
Doesn't feel it works right. And if we have to go back to other communities, do it over just because we've already done it or moved ahead, so what? I'd, I'd like to get it corrected.
Okay. So can I get a motion then to approve the agreement with the exception of under five A clerk, the first sentence is struck? Would you?
Judge, is that acceptable? I guess what, what changes you want?
That's all I'm, I think would be necessary. I, I, I don't, I don't think as I was listening, other things you were discussing that we need to take a, you know, a hammer to something that a scalpel works just fine.
Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to that regard then?
Make that motion.
Okay. Move Baldur Mendori. Is there a second?
I can.
Second, Baldur Miguel hard. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving with that one uh, amendment or one alteration, please say uh, aye.
Aye.
Host, no? Motion carries. So I guess we'll have to inform Brown Deer that we made a change to the language and ask them to reconsider with the new language and hopefully Bayside hasn't approved yet. So.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah. Thank you, Judge. All right. Uh, next item L, resolution designated in three polling places in the city of Glendale. This is the clerk. Did you bring this on forward or is this? You certainly can. You're, you're the, you're the one task with making sure we hold elections. You're the one that has to negotiate where we have this location too. So.
All right. So um, as everybody knows, Nicolay is under um, pretty heavy construction due to the referendum. So originally we were told that we would be able to have elections there in twenty twenty-three, but their construction started earlier than anticipated. So we were notified after the November election that we would not be able to have twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four there. Um, so we had to find a new location um, to have our elections for the next two years. Obviously twenty twenty-three is a little bit smaller, but twenty twenty-four is a presidential. So it has to be someplace that can hold a large volume of people. Um, I have to take into consideration all of the things that the state requires me to do. Um, particularly um, being an accessible polling location. Um, has adequate parking. Um, provides space for poll workers to do processing of ballots and everything like that. So we had taken a few locations into consideration and the Bavarian Beer House is the most suitable location. It was actually a consideration in twenty twenty as well, when we switched over to Nicolay. Those were our top two sites that we had considered. Um, the Bavarian was um, more than happy to work with us this time around again when I contacted them. So um, I feel like this is a great option. Um, they have adequate parking. They will work with us on signage. They will work with us to get in there for setup, teardown. They're not charging us anything to be there. Um, and they're definitely handicap accessible. It's on the lower level. So you can get in right off of the parking lot. Um, and um, how is that? So the only location that is changing is the districts one and three. City Hall will still be two and six. Good Hope will still be four and five. So I do need to notice everybody who lives in district one and three, that unfortunately their polling place has to change again.
So this is, this temporary change, this is for twenty twenty-three. So you're, you're.
Twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Uh, so the, what's before us is a resolution to adopt these only for the two elections that are coming up this February and April, and then the four elections next year.
Resolution is in perpetuity. You would have to make another resolution to change that. There is language in the resolution in front of you that says it is the intent to make it a temporary until a more permanent solution is determined in we, what we approximate twenty twenty-five. Um, there's no um, force behind that, but it just says what the intent is that it would be for twenty-three and twenty-four. And then twenty-five, um, a more permanent solution would be um, looked at. So that's the resolution in front of you. The original one did not have that language whatsoever. Um, but again, a new resolution, and correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, would need to be approved to change the location regardless of what's in there.
Correct.
For the resolution that was noticed in the packet uh, doesn't have that language. But the resolution that was on our desk when we come in tonight is the one that does say that it's temporary for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four elections. Okay. So I guess we've got two different options here of what people want to adopt. One would be to adopt the one that's in perpetuity that was in our packets or the one that uh, that's before us here in paper form. Um, so I'm going to open the floor to a motion.
Oh, I would move uh, the, the modified uh, resolution.
This paper one.
Right.
Okay. So that's the one that says that it is for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four election, temporary until the twenty fifteen elections. Okay. And I'll to move by Alderman Galhard, second by Alderman Doherty. Okay. Any discussion?
I, I guess I, I'll just uh, open up the discussion. I, uh, I was under the impression that um, once we were done with the Bavarian Beer House for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we go back to Nicolay. I did check with uh, Greg Cabar, the superintendent Nicolay, and he uh, is fine with um, Glendale resuming that as a uh, a polling place after the construction is done. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that uh, we were all on board with the idea that it would uh, come back at least for district three uh, to Nicolay. I, I don't have any objection to uh, district one voters continuing to, to vote at Bavarian Beer House uh, after uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, none whatsoever. But uh, district three, I'd like to have the voters uh, back at Nicolay.
Hold on, Bukovic.
Um, I'm going to push back a little bit. We have three polling locations. We have, we have had three polling locations at least since I have been on. Um, our polling location has always been miles away from where our district is for the most part. It's okay for three to come down to district one and it stay together. Number one, Nicolay does not have a bus route. I'm just saying it doesn't have a bus route that comes in front of there. So the accessibility for people, at least in my district, to get there is not there. They either have to walk from Bender or walk from Good Hope where there's one and a half blocks to walk to the beer house. Um, a lot of my people don't have cars, so they can't, or some of my people who don't have cars can't get there. So I, I welcome the move to the Bavarian, Bavarian Beer House because it's more accessible. And especially since district one has one of the lowest voter turnouts, I finally realized maybe they have it is because the accessibility to get to where they need to go. No, every, except for when it was at the North Shore Library. It has never been a straight bus line to any place, not um, the Cardinal Stretch, not Nicolay.
You know, in the twenty years I've lived in the city, um, district one has never voted in, in their actual district, voted at the North Shore.
Voted at the North Shore Library, which is actually in District Three. And the entire time I've lived here. District Six has voted outside of its district the entire time. We voted City Hall. Um, so I do, I do understand what you're saying, these concerns about not having spaces within the districts. If, if you're gonna have locations, they should, they should be as accessible and as centrally located as they can be. Four and Five voted Good Hope School, which is literally on the line between four and five. And, and Two and Six vote here at City Hall, but District Six starts two blocks over there. It's not really, it's not far out of the district. But you, you are raising it an interesting point, even before when we had six polling locations, District One's location was at the North Shore Library. And then I think you and I were talking the other day, every time you've been on the ballot. You've, you, you've been, every time you've been on the ballot for election to your automatic seat. You've had to vote at a different location. This is your fourth location as you're on the ballot this time for a fourth time. When she raised that point to me, I was like, really? And she goes, first time I was on the ballot, I voted for myself at the North Shore Library. The second time it was at Cardinal Stretch, the third time was at Nicolay. So your, and now it'll be at the Bavarian Beer House. Your district has been moved more than any of it I've seen.
We'll get two years to see how this goes.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, uh, and Tamika and I talked about this a couple of years ago. I know that she looked for a place in, in her district for voters. And I know we had a discussion about a, a temple that you were considering and that was rejected outright. Uh, so again, I mean, to the extent that uh, the Bavarian Beer House is a great place for District One voters, I, I would say, you know. I have no problem continuing on that, but I'd like, you know, District Three to vote at Nicolay, where it is uh, easy and accessible uh, to those uh, voters.
But that'll add cost to adding another polling place, which is the original reason why they went from six to three.
Yeah, voting's an important thing.
Voting's an important thing. We'll have to work that out. I don't think we have to settle that tonight. But the reality is, if we need more polling places, we should have more polling places. I, I spend most of my life trying to be effective and efficient. But voting's important, so it isn't all about efficiency.
And it's, it's not that expensive. These places we get, we get them for free, so I don't think the expense is all that much.
I do, I do see the clerk raising her hand to be recognized. I'm gonna call on the clerk.
I'm gonna say two things. The first thing is that um, while I understand that Alderman Gelhard has spoke to Dr. Cabara. I did reach out to Dr. Cabara and ask for confirmation if we could return, and I have yet to receive that confirmation, so.
I guess I'm in the email that he sent me.
And that's fine, but um, I would also like to remind everybody that. Twenty twenty-five is two years away, so just because we are told now that we could return in twenty twenty-five, a lot could change in two years. So. It's just a gentle reminder that it's two years and who knows what could happen in two years, so. I think that it's fair to give the Bavarian a, a good shot at how it could go and see what happens, because. In twenty twenty-five, we don't know what Nicolay's status will be, and with this way things happen in schools. And school safety, Nicolay could very easily say that they don't want us to return. After they do their build out and everything else. So. I would just like to, everybody to give the Bavarian a fair shot. That is my first thought. And my second thing is that. Um, it's very easy to say that it's not an expense to run a polling location, but we did just order Badger Books, and that is a huge expense. So to order three more sets of those, to go back to six polling places when we went down to three polling places. Is something to take into consideration, because that was not an inexpensive venture. And to staff three more polling places when we have a difficult time staffing three. Um, there's a lot that goes into running an election that unless you are on my end of it, people don't really take into consideration. So just something to think about.
All right, so we do have before us in the resolution, this is the one that has been moved.
That one is actually the incorrect one. The language is not in that one. The wrong one was printed. I just emailed it to everybody and I can read out the language that should be in there. Which states the city council generally agrees that the change of the polling place for District One and District Three is anticipated to be temporary. Until the two thousand twenty-five election cycle, when the city council will be better equipped to determine a longer term polling place and.
That's what's in here. Mine didn't say that. What was it, by Alderman Gelhard and seconded by Alderman Doherty. This piece of paper that's in front of us, does not have that language.
Sorry, mine didn't say that.
Yep.
I am one of those individuals that do remember six polling places. I am also one of the individuals that was involved when they went down to three because of the cost involved in uh, revenue caps. And also before we went down to three, you have to remember the Bavarian Beer House was not always a Bavarian Beer House. And at that time, when it was still an inn, it was having financial struggles as well, hence the reason it wasn't, I picked in the past, but. I do remember the six and I do remember the grief every district person had received going down to three. And it was not an easy. Choice of making the three, three um, locations, so. Do not take the, the decision lightly once you have to move again.
Hey, all those in favor then of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh's? Motion carries, and I assume you have to put a mailing out like yesterday. To Districts One and Three, correct?
I already have the notice created, so that will go out this week and it'll be posted in, on the website and the news uh. Kayla's electronic newsletter that she sends out in pretty much as many places that we can.
Okay.
Have it, so.
Perfect, and then we can post it on Nextdoor and Facebook and everywhere else social media wise too.
Correct, and the county is already notified basically that this was our intended change pending approval at tonight's meeting, because they have to start programming their data sticks.
Okay, thank you. Hey, one last item, review and approval of an ordinance allowing for expanded issuance of Class B fermented malt beverage. I will recognize Carl, and then I do have somebody in the audience who wants to speak to this, so go ahead. Yeah.
So as we did uh, make it a, we've made a city code amendment several months ago to allow up to three. Um, liquor license, the fermented liquor licenses for um, businesses not considered a restaurant. Um, we just had a liquor license request for a paint and sip place in, in the uh, Bay Shore Mall. We were unable to issue them a Class C license, because per state statute, uh, you have to be considered a restaurant in order to serve wine. Um, the state statute does not require that you be a restaurant to be um, to get a Class B fermented um, malt beverage license. Um, that was a city. Liquor. Sorry, intoxicating liquor license. Yeah, not fermented, sorry, you're correct. Um, an intoxicating liquor license. Um, as a result, um, however, the city's code prohibited the, that liquor license from being issued, so. The paint and sip place, which wanted to serve wine, was only able to serve beer. Um, we did a review of that here, um, and as more and more restaurants are opening up, like axe throwing and theaters and. Bowling alleys. Oh, there's a lot of them out there.
Yeah.
That's not hope, they're home occupations.
Put that on the list. Um. We are presenting an ordinance for consideration to eliminate the requirement that the intoxicating liquor license. Would require fifty percent of the sales be from restaurant. So essentially, that's the ordinance that's in front of you, and if I missed anything, Nathan, please let me know. I did in here list the amount of liquor licenses that we have and the number that we've issued, just so that there are plenty still available in the city.
Um, if I could just throw in a quick part, part K under section five, I just wanted to highlight this. Because the way that it normally works. If you have uh, a business selling liquor onsite. And you have some other business. Generally, it has to be, the area where you sell the liquor has to be cordoned off with a special entrance and all these other requirements. However. I get this question all the time. Well, how come there's a grocery store in Shorewood that uh, you can walk around with a beer while you're shopping? Or how come I can go to the bowling alley and the, the person, you know, next to bowling, next to some kids is having the beer frame or whatever? Well. Chapter one twenty-five of the Wisconsin statutes says that. If you have certain kinds of businesses, you don't need that demarcation line and you can intermingle like that. And so the language in part K, which says limitations on other businesses' Class B premises. That is taken verbatim out of the state statute. So the state statute allows. A Class B intoxicating uh, liquor license and a Class B beer license to be issued. Um, and it says the restrictions don't apply to any of the following. In other words, the restrictions being you gotta separate. Doesn't apply to a hotel, a restaurant. Here's, then here's the kicker, a combined grocery store in tavern. A combined novelty store in tavern. A bowling center or recreation premises, there's your axe throwing. Um, a club society or lodge or a movie theater. That's why when the old movie theater was down here, you could, you know, you, you could buy a, a. Glass of beer or, 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 you know, uh, other liquor, yeah, and, and as you went in. So that's, that's, that's verbatim out of the statute. The only one I didn't include, there was another one. For race um, racetracks, and we don't, we don't have one of those, so I left that out. Um, but the other thing that I wanted to point out, just so that to make you aware of, is. If you look under part uh, two. Which, which talks about the retail Class B fermented malt beverage license and eliminates uh, the restriction. From uh, just having it for restaurants. There's a sentence that I carried over from the existing code. I didn't feel it was my place to remove this, because it's a policy question, not a legal question, but I wanted to point it out to you. The sentence that's included that comes from the existing code says, such licenses. May not be issued to any person acting as an agent for or in the employ of another. And under Wisconsin statute one twenty-five oh four. There is a specific. Provision for issuing licenses to agents for corporations. And it says a corporation or limited, that you can't, it says no corporation or limited liability company. Under the laws of the state. Maybe issued an alcohol beverage license unless. The entity appoints an agent prescribed as herein, and. Uh, the entity vests in the agent uh, by properly authorized and executed written delegation, full authority, et cetera, et cetera, to follow everything out of the statute. So. I don't know where that came from, but again, I just didn't see it was my place. As the attorney to make a policy decision when we were working on this, so. I left it in there, but I highlighted it, so if you want to pass it and remove that, you can. That's, that was my only comment.
Okay. Uh, Rob, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, Robert Cronwell, seventy-five thirty North Applewood Lane. Uh, I wanted to thank the council for taking my concerns um, and, and. Solving some of the issues I saw a couple of months ago when we were working on these liquor licenses. Um, I would point out that there is also um, a misprint in here under section one. Uh, where it says uh, City of Glendale, section seven two four B. Retail Class B, and then it goes on to say fermented malt beverage retailer's license is repealed. That should actually say intoxicating liquor license. Because you actually do the fermented. Malt beverage like retail license in section two. Um, so if you want to fix that language, it doesn't really change anything. You're eliminating it anyway. Um. And then I also wanted to point out. While this fixes all the issues I had with what was going on before and clears the way for approving a liquor license in Bay Shore for like the movie theater and bowling alley that's coming in. That's great, and if. Somebody wants to put an axe throwing place in there, that'd be great too. I love doing that. Um. But you've. The way the ordinances were written before, you could not. Operate a bar in Glendale. And the thing that kept that from happening was the restaurant restriction, where at least fifty percent of your revenue had to come from uh, from food sales. So that's being, my understanding is that's being eliminated from these changes. So just so you're aware, people can come and open up bars here now. With this change. Um, I don't know if that was the intention uh, of what you wanted to accomplish or not. I mean, the closest thing to a bar we've had is uh, the Brick and Bar Louis, and they had to serve a lot of food in order to have their licenses. We've never, if you may not have noticed, but we don't have any bars in Glendale's and that, and that's why. Uh, but. That actually had to serve food as well. They had a temporary license until they started serving the food. Because you had that requirement there. So I, I'm just pointing out that this change means. We're open for bars. Because it seemed to be something we were going out of our way to avoid before. So there you go. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so we do have, um, so uh, city attorney, the language that was before us. You, did you, that one change that Rob mentioned, was that?
Yeah, I think, so the, the introduction there is just to give direction to the uh. The company that does the, the, the coding for us, yeah, the codifying. So it does, the seven point two point four B is correct, and it's. It's, it should, it should be. Looks like it should be retail Class B intoxicating liquor license. So I, I just, I consider that a scrivener's error, so when, when we give that to the. Codification people, we can just tell them that, that we can, we can just let them know that. That, that's just the direction as to where to put it in the code. You're not actually voting on. That, that's not part of the amendment, so the, 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 the substance there is correct. The, the body of it is correct.
Did you want us? Did you want us to, uh, when we, you did have that bolded in language in section two. Did you want us to determine, the motion should either be to approve the ordinance as presented or approve the ordinance striking that line? Okay, what is your recommendation to us as the city attorney?
I, I would. I would allow it. I, I would strike the.
Strike it, okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the ordinance with, uh, as presented with the exception of in section two, striking the last line? Thank you. Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second? Second, Baldomir Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oh's no? Motion carries. Okay.
I have one, one quick question.
Yeah, good.
Understanding, I noticed in your explanation. From city administrator. You have everything instead of class, it's under Class A, and then there's nothing under Class A. You got them all the same type of classes, even though the piece of description, I always thought there was a difference in how your quote marks were. From the stat, state statue.
Yeah, there's um.
But it's not shown in this, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding. We're under the description. Because again, there's class, and I understand there is a slightly description, but there was A and then there's Classic. Which is not.
Yeah, class. Class A is the sale for off-premise consumption.
I understand, but I'm just saying what's being shown is all the same. Throughout your description. I want to make sure that we're going to record it correctly, because you're talking for codification.
We didn't change anything in the Class A um, in this ordinance.
Okay.
That, that was, that was. Right, but that's just the memo, right, right.
And I just want to make sure of the codification, it would be done correctly.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for catching that.
All right, commission committee and board and staff reports. I'm gonna start, because there is one thing I would do want to mention tonight. Tomorrow morning is a North Shore Fire Department meeting. But one of the things that will be put before the Fire Department Board tomorrow, um, and this doesn't necessarily need to be an agenda item to vote on, but I would like to just make sure everybody is comfortable, because. I'm gonna have to vote on this tomorrow. With the closure, temporary closure of approximately twelve to fourteen months of this fire station that is right next door, while it gets demolished and rebuilt. We have to temporarily house in other locations. And so um, what is going to be proposed tomorrow, there is a uh, a City of Milwaukee. Fire station on Silver Spring at Teutonia, just south of Teutonia. That is very close to here, uh, but it does mean a, a, there, there's like a thirty or forty second difference in response times. Based on where you're coming from, and it, so it does slightly change those response times if the fire truck is moved there. And then we do have ambulances placed throughout the North Shore anyway. The ambulance that's here would likely go to Whitefish Bay. So that's the proposal tomorrow. I just want to make sure if anybody has any serious concerns, you share them with me now before I go to the Fire Department Board meeting tomorrow. And say yes, that temporary relocation is suitable to the City of Glendale. Go ahead.
From a practical matter, is there, I mean, what would be the choice?
Well, I know that there was an attempt the, to, to see if there were places that could be rented, and none of those really served. None of them could serve adequately as a fire station. But moving our truck, Milwaukee isn't charging for this. It's part of our mutual aid, right? We would house a truck there, and then we'd house, we'd move the, the ambulance over to Whitefish Bay just during the, the demolition and reconstruction. So, I mean, it does, it slightly changes our response times, but it does not change our international accreditation for the Fire Department. So, but it does slightly change our response times. Alderman Gelhard?
Maybe there's a home occupation that we could. I, I was thinking there was a cul-de-sac we could use, but I wasn't gonna say it, but you went there.
I know somebody with a really big garage, but.
I just say. I felt so sorry. I did a ride along and I felt so sorry for the Whitefish Bay. When they were building and they were in this. These trailers. It was absolutely horrible and I felt bad for them, so I'm glad they're not, is the, are they gonna be in those trailers? Because I hope not.
I, I don't know. I just know where the, where. Where the vehicles will be housed is what has to be the discussion tomorrow. I don't know if, uh, I do, actually I do.
She found, so.
Yeah, but. Yeah, but we're not noticed for this as an agenda item. It's part of my report because I'm asking you direction on how to uh how to vote. But we do have Chief Whitaker on here because I know he wanted to, well, I said I was gonna raise this issue, and he did want to hear from me. Hold on, he's just texting me. He says no trailers, so. All right, so you guys are comfortable if I say yes tomorrow on behalf of Glendale, okay? And like you said, it's it's a temporary move. So that was the main thing I wanted to bring up in my report. Um, ICC met today, but I had a medical appointment and I had to teach a class. So Carl, was there anything that came up at the ICC that?
Nothing significant to report today.
That's the first ICC meeting I've missed in like five years, so. Anyway, nothing important, thank you. Um, so we'll go ahead then with the rest of our reports. Carl, did you have any other reports? No, uh, Nathan, anything? Chief?
Nothing.
Megan? Okay, we'll go around this uh the the table. One, two.
Nothing.
Three.
I did head up the planning commission last week, and uh here's the summary of what we did. We approved a business application for C two boutique uh retail clothing store at sixty forty Northport Washington Road. We approved the business application of Bradley Family Dental, which is coming in uh where the former Johnson's Green Seven Bar and Grill was. Uh, we approved new windows at Malio's, uh forty-two eighty-seven Northport Washington Road. Mr. Malio actually brought in a part of the window to show us what he was putting in. And finally, we approved the fish passage at Clutch Park and repairs to the Clutch Park Dam.
Fighting. Thank you. Four?
Nothing to report.
Five?
Quickly, on the Fourth of July, uh, we're looking to probably have a more limited event this year based on just staff and um I guess my feedback so far to date. So we're looking at still doing a parade, and then we would have a bit of a a gap in the schedule because it's always gets a little quiet and light, and we're always trying to fill that time. So rather than fight to fill the time, we're going to just kind of adjourn and come back together for the the band and the fireworks. And we would still likely have like bouncy houses and a couple of activities, but um not anything else during the the day section there. Uh, we would still probably still have food trucks and stuff. So just want to give everybody that's the direction things are heading. If you have any issues or concerns, let me know, and we're always looking for volunteers.
Six. I will say I didn't make it to the December library board meeting. I was on the water. And I think the next library board meeting is on the nineteenth, which is the third Thursday, I think. And then tentatively right now, Music and the Glen is planning to meet at the end of the month. And um it just with my schedule between work and vacation and the holidays and anything else that came in between there, I haven't had a lot of chance to get stuff to the mayor for positions and get stuff to the current committee members. So, but we're working on it. We're looking positive because I got lots of people who males to be on the play at the, uh, Music and the Glen. So that's interesting because I haven't had that many in years.
Oh, good. You have a, your committee members, I think, are two-year terms, right?
I thought it was three.
Three-year terms? Are they staggered? Or they all get appointed at once?
Originally, they were all appointed at once, but I would like to stagger them because that way you have some continuity going from one year to the next.
But your people are all still appointed, they didn't have their terms expire, correct?
I think there's only one that may have expired, but other, otherwise the ones that I'm missing are just people who have resigned because of jobs.
So you and I just need to talk about filling those vacancies and looking at a way of staggering terms?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But you can still have your meeting later this month because you still have enough of a committee.
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
They're all three-year terms, and they expire September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two, it looks like. Yeah.
Oh. Okay, then we gotta get you appointed at the next meeting so that you can have a meeting later this month. Yes, yes. All right. Um, and nothing else come before the council would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Moved by everybody, seconded by everybody, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
O's, no? Further?
Aye with the ax and.